Study session of Monday, July 13th. Who's taking the notes? Kelda is 6:04 PM. They'll call the meeting to order. That would be you, City Manager. You're up first.
Oh, okay, all right. So, thank you. I wanted to take a moment to introduce our newest staff person, Rami, who is our part-time code enforcement person, and I believe he's connected to us by telephone, since I don't see his picture. So, Rami, are you there?
Yeah, I'm right here.
Okay. Oh, nice car. All righty. So, if you could just take a few minutes to introduce yourself and talk a little bit about your background and anything else you'd like to share.
Well, thank you for giving me this opportunity to meet everyone. My name is Rami Swedan. I worked in Claussen two years as a code enforcement, part-time, still am in Claussen, just hasn't, haven't been back yet. I'm straight out of the automotive industry. I wanted a career change, and I figured government work would be a way to do it, and Claussen gave me that opportunity as a code enforcement officer, and I'm hoping to expand in that field. I was a plant manager for the automotive industry and over 22 years from the automotive So, there's anything else that I need to say?
Well, just welcome. You know, like I said when I met you, we're excited to have you on board. I was looking at the reports and already seeing the fruits of your labor, so we're excited and happy to have you on board.
Well, thank you so much. I appreciate that.
And have fun.
I'm beginning to feel that very friendly people, especially the residents.
For now, for now. I'm sure you've already talked to Kelda.
Yes, I sure have.
Next up, hello, Councilman Ferguson. Okay.
Hello.
Next, we have a discussion for the RFP for the Realtor for the House in the Woods.
Right. And so Mayor and Council members, if you recall, we had previously put out an RFP for those more looking at someone who could help us market the property for a redeveloper or developer. So, the instructions at this point was to do an RFP for really your basic Realtor, so to place the property, to find the valuation list and market it. While I was putting that together, you received a inquiry, I guess, a letter of interest from Mr. and Mrs. Rudolph relative to the purchase of the property and their interest in constructing a home at that site. So, I just needed some direction from you on how you wanted to proceed.
So, one, just to reiterate and to be on the record of please no one contact these people. We just want to make sure that we allow the whomever the real estate agent is going to be for that person and perhaps our city attorney and city manager be the only ones that contact them. As far as how to proceed, I think that it should be, one, put on the website. Two, I think, do we post RFPs in the paper? I can't remember. I don't think we've done a RFP in a while.
Sometimes we do. We've also been using the state listing for RFPs, and that's what we did last time for the Realtor for the development of the property, so I can do it there as well.
Okay. Anybody else have an idea of what, how to proceed next, or any questions about the RFP?
Well, I think the, really, the biggest thing is, I mean, well, the valuation of the property, I mean, you know, we've got an offer for $40,000. I have no idea whether or not that's an appropriate offer or not, and hopefully, you know, you know, a Realtor can figure that out for us, you know. So, that's my only comment.
I'm thinking that is more for summary. There is a lot over here that was going for 70 and is much, much smaller than that, but I mean, I guess that, I'm just guessing. So, I guess that we will resolve that issue once we got a Realtor.
Go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I was just saying, I agree. It may cost more. That piece of property should cost more. Just one other observation. So, is there some sort of survey that's going to be conducted on the property? Because, you know, clearly, we don't know where those property lines are now because everything's so overgrown. Is there a mandate to do that first? Oh, what is that?
Probably a governor.
I think that's my phone, too. Holy cow.
It's an Amber Alert.
Sorry about that. Freaked out.
Everybody's going to get it.
I think a survey would be done if, you know, would have to be done if we sell the property as part of the process, just like any other.
Yeah, that would be standard title work that would be done. They would require a survey before they did any sort of building or improvements to it, so.
All right. And just so I'm clear, it's one piece of property, right? Sorry, Cheryl. I apologize. It's just one lot, correct? We didn't do any, I don't recall us doing anything to divide or anything like that. It's just classified as one lot?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Cheryl. Go ahead.
Okay.
Cheryl, I did have one question. In the financial piece that you had up at the front, so I knew we had $88,000 on costs into the property. What was the 22,000 since Village Preserve total? It kind of got broke up onto the next, broken up onto the next page. I wasn't quite sure what that 22,000 was. Was that once it was temporarily a nature preserve? We put more money into it?
That's not my spreadsheet. So, looking at the 22,000, I really couldn't tell you. It's not my spreadsheet. It was one that was in the file.
If I can, I think that might have been what they put in the budget for the preserve, but it was never really spent.
Okay.
There was a small amount spent from the preserve, when the preserve took over, but they didn't use it in the budget. I think those might have been the budget figures.
No, you said it was 88,000?
No, he was talking about the since the Village Preserve total, the 22.
Okay, yep.
And I think those were budget figures, if I'm not mistaken, but I didn't do the spreadsheet either, so.
Let me just ask the question. I thought we had decided a couple councils ago that we would try to recoup the money that we spent on the property. We're talking demolition, running the spigot, which is kind of what you guys are alluding to right now, as well as any additional money from the preserve. So, I think we're closer, we're closer to 90,000 just as the demolition alone, right?
Right, but that's if we can. I mean, if the market value is $60,000 for the house and we have $90,000 into it, there's no way to recoup that 30,000. So, that was, that was kind of the impetus behind my comment, saying, you know, we've got an offer for 40K. Let's, you know, which is great, but let's see what the market value is, because if the market value is, like Kelly said, like 70K, then we got to sell it for 70K because we got $80,000 into it.
Yeah, makes sense. Thank you.
So, the general direction is to go ahead with seeking the Realtor and telling any prospective buyers that we want to get the Realtor in place first before we entertain offers, because we don't know the value of the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we, do we have any sense of the timeframe from the particular person who offered? I mean, are they, do they give you any indication that if, you know, they need to know by a certain time period?
That wasn't provided to me, and I don't see that. I invited them to attend this meeting, and I don't see them, their names showing up, but I didn't get the sense there was like absolute urgency that they had to know in two weeks, so.
So, can we just follow up with them to see if they have a timeframe? I mean, and simply just an email probably would do. And that's specifically to Dr. Mitchell only.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to rush the process, but obviously, if they have a timeframe and $40,000 is a, you know, a fair market value offer, we don't want to lose it, you know.
Right. And looks like Jill has a question. Sorry, Kelda, I'm taking your thunder.
Hi there. I just wanted to remind you all that this House in the Woods site is one of the redevelopment sites, one of the three that's included in the master plan that is, the planning commission is working on right now, so that it's likely that it will remain residential. It's not, the planning commission's discussions haven't included anything else, but I just wanted to remind you all of that as we're working on there right now.
Thank you.
I don't know if you saw Suzie or not, but she said, she spoke to him over a year ago, so she thinks he's pretty patient.
Okay. A quick question on the butterfly section of that property. That does come with the, with the main lot, correct? There's a butterfly triangle in the front. You guys recall that, right?
That's, I think that's city-owned.
Is that city-owned?
I believe so.
Okay.
You're talking about the little park in between the road?
Yes, yes. Okay. Now, I'm really confused, because we were trying to sell both of those. We were trying to sell both of those. Remember that?
No, I don't remember. We were trying to sell both of them, but I didn't realize that, I mean, because no one was, I guess that might have been the Village Preserve, because no one was maintaining it on our.
It's both city-owned technically.
Right, right.
I thought we had discussions on that butterfly garden in addition to the main lot. That was one of the selling points. I thought we talked about that.
I don't recall that being separate.
We even talked about vacating the road and all that. We remember a couple months back.
The only thing I remember about vacating the road was that was going to be sold altogether.
Okay, with the butterfly included.
Right. I thought you said something about selling it separately.
No, no, I said, isn't that together? Isn't that one piece of property? And Scott just said it's, that part is the city's.
Just, I pulled it up real quick, and it doesn't have a parcel ID number, and I don't know that it would be dimensionally big enough to exceed a road easement. You've got roads on all three sides of it, so I don't think it's, it doesn't appear to be, at least per Oakland County records, doesn't appear to be part of that parcel.
Okay. All right, that solves one problem. So, if it's city-owned, so please have DPW start cutting that immediately.
What about the butterflies?
I think they vacated that a long time ago.
Please put that down as a project for DPW. Thank you. That's it for me.
That would have been nice to have the, like, the little garden there instead, you know?
Yeah, that's true.
If we're done with the House of Woods, then we'll move on. You know what needs to be done. Okay. Next up, everyone's favorite subject right now, fireworks.
I'll let Scott take this one.
All right. So, we, so our ordinance right now is actually more restrictive in terms of the limitations on what fireworks we allow, but because there's a conflict with the state law on the dates that they're allowed to shoot fireworks, our ordinance, although it's still effective, like, it's effective right now, somewhere to go out and shoot fireworks, we can write them a ticket under our ordinance, but during the period of time that the state law allows for them, we can't enforce our ordinance. So, what Cheryl asked and what I provided tonight for you is an update to our fireworks ordinance that adopts, I guess, the similar dates and restrictions that the state law does, so that in the event someone were to shoot fireworks off after hours on the dates where they are allowed, we would be able to ticket them for those violations. And obviously, any, if they're outside of the timeframe that are allowable, that they would be ticketable offenses under our local ordinance.
So, one thing I was going to say about this is that when it comes to, and I'm just saying this, I know the answer for the most part, is that when it comes to the state ordinance and our ordinance, the state always supersedes, correct?
Generally, yes, but the way that the state fireworks ordinance was written, it allowed for local regulation, just not on the days that they said they were allowed. So, it's kind of a unique, but yeah, typically, when the, there's overlapping jurisdiction or this state law has the same, the city ordinance can't be more restrictive than the state laws is typically. We can adopt, we can pass our own ordinance that is equally as restrictive, but we can't be more restrictive than the state ordinance.
Gotcha. Anyone have any questions about, concerns about the ordinance?
This will be on the July 27th council agenda for the first reading.
Okay. Everybody saving their comments for the next two? I don't know which one of these are the right, which one to go first. I want to do the infrastructure committee or the marijuana committee first. So, I guess we'll just jump in there and do the infrastructure as it is stated.
I thought you were going to give Bruce a break.
I was going to, but then I don't, I'm like this with the whole marijuana study group, too, so.
You just go in order.
Sit back, it's going to get bumpy.
Right.
Okay, I'll try to do this as quick as possible, you know, because obviously, this is going to be the meat of our discussion, you know, because it will, it should be on the 27th agenda for ballot approval. But basically, since November, the committee has been working. The one really good point is that we've had a lot of community participation. We had the level of participation that we would have liked pre-last November throughout the process, but we did get a lot of participation and we got a lot of input. We also had, I think everybody, well, everybody here should know, we also had a new member who came on board after the election, who was actually against the last proposal pretty vocally, and he has been great on the committee. He's really helped us shape the proposal, has come up with some great ideas, and as I said, we took a lot of community input as well to develop the new proposal. Now, initially, we had, we had three plans. You know, the first one was a multiple source plan, which was actually a really good plan, where we pulled funds from the general fund, a public safety millage, and a headly rollback. But we decided as a committee that that was kind of complicated for the voters, you know, and we thought that might have helped it not pass, and so we decided not to go with that one. We also had a longer-term proposal. This one was actually my personal favorite, but, you know, we went with the assumption with the second plan that we looked at, which was, you know, what if we did a longer-term plan like we did last time, but the millage rate was nowhere near as high? And that one would have fixed all of our subpar roads and only the subpar roads, but the committee kind of felt that a 20-year plan was too long. And so, what we landed on was a proposal that, and actually, let me, I want to share, let me share the document here.
Thank you.
Can you enable me for screen sharing, please?
You're not.
Like it's doing something here. Okay, so now, uh, now I don't even have the share button on it.
Which one do you want, Bruce?
Well, it's, it's, oh wait, I'm rejoining. Okay, now let's see. Do you have the one that says a recommendation version three? It would have been in an email earlier today.
Yes, I do.
Yeah, so, well, Cheryl can get it for me. That way, I was going to, I could point at it. Any ideas, Cheryl?
Oh, I can't share either. I thought I was special, but I guess I'm not either.
Maybe try making me a co-host?
Yeah. See if that worked.
Yeah, okay. Who can share? I'll just say all panelists. Who can start sharing? Only, okay. So, now, let's see if I can do this. Close that. Okay, here we go.
Sweet.
Okay, so, yeah, so what was I saying? Oh, yeah, yeah. So, then the third plan that we, you know, that we landed on was, was one that will do about seven, a little over seven miles of road. It's a 10-year payback. The project itself will take about three years to do the 7.1 miles, and over 10 years, it would cost the residents 3.9 mils, which is dramatically less than the 8.3 that we were asking last November. The plan itself, you know, we have about 15 miles of road that are in need of repair. So, if you remember, we had a lot of road that just needed simple resurfacing, so we're not talking about any of that road. If you subtract that out, we've got about 15 miles of road that need some form of repair. And so, what we proposed was doing about seven miles of that. We would have loved to have done it all, but if, in a 10-year payback period with trying to keep the millage rate under four, you know, that's all the road that we can do in that time period, and obviously, if this goes well, at some point in the future, we could, we could do another one to address the remaining road. And so, what we, what we decided to focus on, first off, was specifically just the asphalt road. So, we're not doing any concrete. The concrete work is a lot more expensive, and it's a much, much lower percentage of our road system. So, we decided as a committee to focus only on the asphalt. And again, this particular proposal is not going to do all the asphalt roads that are in need of repair, just a portion of it, seven miles out of about roughly 15. And so, just to give you a sense of the makeup of what's going to be included. So, in terms of the full 1A reconstruction, so that's basically when we have to rip out the entire road, then to all the substructure, and then replace everything, all 15 inches, we have four miles approximately that are in that category. And so, what we're proposing is that we, and the way we came up with our estimate, is that we were proposing we'll do roughly about 2.6 miles of that. So, roughly, a little over 50% of the roads that need full reconstruction, and that puts about $3 million roughly towards the total, the total project. Similarly, we've got one mile requiring 1B construction, and that's when the base of the road is in good condition, but just the five inches of asphalt needs to be ripped out and replaced. And so, so what we're saying here, of that one mile, we're going to do about 60% of it, about 0.6 miles, and that contributed about $500,000 towards the project. And then, the most number of miles, about 4.4 miles, falls into the rehab category, which is the, you know, the less expensive of the three modes, where we just take off the top three inches of asphalt and replace it. And so, what we're proposing here is that of those 4.4 miles, we're going to do about 3.7 of them, and so roughly about 75% of the road in that category, which, again, takes us to about $2 million towards our overall estimate for the project. And then, lastly, you know, one of the things we heard pretty loud and clear, especially from the interior residents, relative to the last proposal, you know, when we were talking about redoing all 1.7 miles of our dirt roads. So, we scaled that way back, and in fact, you know, our conversations were really geared mostly towards, you know, a few of the roads that had, were in ingress into the city. And so, what we did is we put $163,000 towards doing dirt roads, so a little bit less than 2% of the overall project cost. And so, and there may be, once, once we get into the project, there may be a small amount of shifting from one category to the other as we decide which roads to do, but it should be pretty close. And that was the basis for the estimate and how we got to $5,845,000 for the overall cost of the project. So, that includes about 5.7 million for the project, which does include 15% contingency for, you know, cost increases and project overruns or underruns and so forth. It includes inflation, and then the $5.8 million also includes the $150,000 in bond, the bond costs. So, we do have a list of roads. In the documents that you received from Cheryl today, we have included both a map and a spreadsheet that shows all the roads that are eligible under the proposal. So, basically, it lists out all of the 1A, 1B, and 1C method, you know, roads that are categorized under those levels, and then goes back and looks at which ones have been done. Some of those roads have been done in previous projects over the last, you know, 10 years, and so, we took those off the list. And so, you do have a list of eligible roads, so the voters will be able to know specifically which roads are eligible to be done under the project. In terms of the cost to the residents, you know, legally, we have to say the first year and the average millage rate, because it's only going to be one bond, whereas last November, it was three bonds that were staged over time. The average in the first year are pretty darn close. They're both about 3.9 mils, again, paid over 10 years. And so, to the average homeowner, so again, you know, the average homeowner in Lathrop has a taxable value of about $67,000. So, that's going to work out to about $263 per year, or if you want to think of it in terms of, you know, $100,000 of the property or taxable value, you know, it'd be $393,000 to somebody who has one of the more expensive homes in the city. I also included in the packet that Cheryl sent to you, the how much will this cost me? So, it's the same kind of table we used last time, you know, so you can get a sense of how much it will cost different taxpayers within the city. It does meet all of the, you know, laws regarding millages and how much we can levy and so forth, and so we're okay there. And then, what we proposed is that each year, for the three years in the project, the steering committee or the infrastructure committee will look at the eligible road list, look at the given conditions of the road, and they will make a recommendation of what roads will be done in that subsequent road construction season to council, and then council can bless it. So, really, it's nice that way, because it's kind of a two-stage process, so there's two reviews towards determining which roads get done. So, let me, let me stop there. I want to talk about the ditches separately, because the ditches are a lot more complex, and there's probably going to be a lot more questions about the ditches. But before I go, that's kind of a brief introduction to the road piece of the project, and so I'll stop and see what questions you guys have.
It's still seven miles of road, correct?
Yeah, seven miles of road.
Okay.
Bottom line, seven miles of road over, paid off over a 10-year time period, right?
Yeah. Yep, in a, in a three-year project.
Yeah.
Starting, starting next spring, summer.
And that, you said it was, the cost was approximately, um, per average household?
Oh, for the, the average household in Lathrop that has a tax, which, which is a taxable value of sixty-seven thousand dollars, it would be two hundred and sixty-three dollars per year.
Okay.
And again, uh, in the packet that you got today, it, uh, you know, the, the same chart that we had, uh, last November that shows, uh, um, you know, in, I think in five thousand dollar increments of taxable value, what the, you know, what the cost will be. So residents will find it very easy to, to know what their cost would be based upon their taxable value.
Okay.
What would have been the impact if we would have done half the roads? Did you guys talk about that at all?
When you say half the road, you mean half of the bad roads?
Half of the total roads that we were gonna do in the first, um, the very first, uh, infrastructure total.
Well, I mean, so, so what that would do is that would, that would essentially double the millage rate. So we, we talked about doing the fifteen miles of, of, of road that were, you know, in, in poor shape. I don't know if you can hear me. The recycling truck is going by and the, the doors are open. Um, but anyway, let me, let me look outside and see what kinda truck it is.
If he has a blue tank top on, then they are combining both trash.
Yeah, well, it's, it's the regular recycling truck, and he's spilling my recycling all over the, the street. So we'll see if he picks it up or not. But, um, uh, yeah, so we, we, um, so there, there's fifteen miles of, of, of road that, that are in bad enough condition that, that can be fixed. There should, you know, we should be looking at fixing. So the one plan that I talked about would have addressed all fifteen of those miles of road. And that's, that's about half the roads of the city. We've got twenty-six miles of road.
Right.
Residential road in the city. Um, that would have been four mils as well, but it would have been stretched over, the payback period would have been stretched over a, a, a twenty, twenty-year period instead of a ten-year period. So...
Right.
Um, we did, we did look at options that way. We, we were also, I mean, I, I should, should have mentioned this upfront, but the, the, um, uh, hang on, I'm gonna shut my front door. It's really loud for me. Um, sorry about that. Um, I, I should have mentioned this upfront. You know, the, the, the vote on the, on the, the, um, proposal that we're delivering to, to council was actually four to one. So we did have one person who was, was against it, um, because he felt that ten years was too long. So we did discuss a five-year plan, but the problem with a five-year plan is, is you do, you know, we can do about three miles. And so the question is, is, you know, if we go through all this work, um, you know, and, and, and then have to get a vote on it, um, for three miles worth of work.
Yeah.
It just doesn't seem like a solu-, you know, a, a broad enough solution, or at least it didn't to the committee. Um, and so that was the main reason why the, the one person, uh, voted against it.
It's just not logical.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, I mean, like I said, my, my, my personal preference was to do the fifteen over, over twenty. But, you know, the, the committee, you know, uh, didn't like a, a twenty-year, and so ten-year felt like a, a, a good compromise between, you know, that we could live.
So what's the, what was the premise behind them not liking the twenty? 'Cause it seems logical you would try to do at least half the roads, which is fifteen miles of road. What was the argument there?
Well, it was, I think it was, I think it was twofold. Well, I, I think the, the stated reason was people just felt it was too long. And you don't know what's gonna happen over twenty years, although my, my thought is you don't know what's gonna happen over five years or two years. Um, but, you know, it's a valid concern. And then I think the, the, I don't think anybody explicitly said this. Correct me if I'm wrong, Cheryl or Saleem, but, um, you know, I, I think also people felt kinda bitten from last time where, you know, just the, the mantra of people was it's too much for too long. Um, and so we, if, there was just, people were worried, I think, um, about it passing if we did another twenty-year, even, even if the millage rate was significantly lower.
I see. Okay.
So you are gonna talk about the ditches, right? Because, I mean, I'm looking at it and I don't really see anything about...
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. I, I just wanted to segregate it and see if, you know, before I moved into the ditches. 'Cause the ditches, we struggled a lot with the ditches. It, it got really, you know, at one point, we thought we had a, a really good solution. And then when we got into the weeds, it got really complicated. But, um, but I'll, I'll get there in a second. I just wanted to make sure everybody, uh, any, any other questions on the road? Okay, then, then let me, let me move on to the ditches. So the, the unfortunate thing is, is that we learned pretty quickly is there really isn't a, 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 a one-size-fits-all solution for, for the ditches. The, the, the first thing that we did, you know, after the, um, the November defeat, is we, we, we thought about as a committee recommending, um, to council, just let's, let's get the ditches fixed. Let's just do a citywide special assessment, um, and, and do all, all the ditches in, in the city. But the problem with that was, um, when you do it as a standalone project, the cost ballooned by about fifty percent, because if you remember from our discussions last November, there's a lot of overlap, uh, between a road project and the, and the ditch project. So the, the, the main one being, in the road project, we're gonna have to break a lot of driveway approaches and repave them because the, the height of the new road won't match the, the driveway approach. Well, the most expensive portion of the ditching program is replacing culverts underneath the driveways, where you have to do all that concrete work. Um, and so because of that, because the ditch proposal, such a standalone ditch proposal would have to pay for that on its own, it went from like four and a half million to six million dollars. And so the, the, it was untenable to, to, to do it that way. Um, but as we had discussions, a lot of the people in our audience, you know, felt that, you know, we really, we, residents in the audience, I should say, felt that we really needed to find a way to continue to do the ditches along with the roads so that the residents, um, you know, still were able to, um, glean the savings of, 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 of leveraging one project off of the other. So that was one thing, one tenant that we were, uh, really working with. The other one that, that we were working with is, you know, and was pretty loud and clear in the, in the last election, um, is people only wanted to pay for their own streets. You know, there were a lot of people that said, why should I have to pay? Our ditches are in good condition. Somebody else's ditches, you know, a mile away are in bad conditions. Why do I have to contribute towards their ditches? And there was, there was a lot of that, that discussion. Um, and so, so basically, um, what we decided to do or to recommend is that as part of this project, the only ditches that will get repaired are the seven miles of ditches that are associated with the roads that get repaired. So those, those are the only ditches that will require to, to be repaired. And the way that we will repair them is through a special assessment, um, street by street. We'll, we'll make special assessments, I'll get into how those are gonna be created, uh, in a second. But, um, we'll create special assessment districts mainly, you know, by street blocks. And the cost of fixing that system on that street, 'cause it all works together, um, will be split evenly among those residents on that city block or on that segment, uh, over ten years. So it would be a ten-year special assessment, um, split evenly. So it, it addresses the, the issue of, 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 of everybody paying the same thing, uh, only paying for their own system, uh, and they would, would still be able to reap the benefit of, of the work taking place simultaneously. Um, so, let me, let me think. So, so the, the, okay, so let me, let me, I got that out of the way. So, um, so the work, the, the work that would, would be done was, would be the same as the work that we talked about last year. So it would be grading the ditches so that they flow appropriately. It would be replacing non-functional driveway culverts and cleaning, uh, both functional driveway culverts and, and extended culverts. Um, so each year, what, what, what would happen would be, oh, and, and actually, let me be really explicit here and say that the, the cost of the special assessment is in addition to the road project.
That's what my question's gonna be.
Yeah, everybody in the city would pay the, 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 the three point nine mils to, to cover the cost of the roads that get repaired throughout the city. But only those people whose roads are worked on will have a special assessment, uh, associated with, um, with, with their road. Now, a couple of things about the special assessments. Um, there's a few things to talk about there. Um, first off is because the special assessments would be kind of small in, in that, you know, let's say you're doing one city, you know, street segment, you know, you may have fourteen houses on a street segment. All it takes is seven or eight of those neighbors to get together and say, we don't want it, we don't want the special assessment, and the special assessment is blocked. Now, as fiduciaries for the tax money that we collect, the problem is, is if you don't, if you put a new road down and you don't do the ditches, you don't get the full life out of the road. So it's about a ten percent loss. So if we spend a hundred thousand dollars to do, you know, a, a particular street, we're, we're throwing ten thousand dollars down the drain if we don't do the, uh, kinda pun intended, not intended actually, but we're throwing ten thousand dollars down the drain by not repairing the, the ditches in that situation. So what we, what we're recommending is that if a city street or, you know, segment, um, blocks the special assessment, then they're taken off of the, the, um, uh, repair list and their street doesn't get repaired. Okay, so, so there's kind of a, there's kind of a, I'm a little confused, Kelly.
Say that again.
So, so let's, let's say, let's say your street is, is one that was slated for repair next, next, next summer. And we go to issue the, the special assessment for the ditch portion of the street. And the neighbors get together and they, all they need is fifty-one percent to, to block the special assessment. So if, if, if more than half of them say, we don't want the special assessment, then the street doesn't get done. Because if it does, we're wasting taxpayer dollars. You know, we're not using them efficiently. So it's kinda like the carrot and the stick. Um, alternatively, what we're also recommending, because the special assessment process is a pretty arduous, um, uh, you know, labor-intensive process, um, you know, we don't wanna go through the process of picking streets and so forth and then find out that, that a, a, a particular street does, you know, vote down the special assessment and now we're late in the game and we have to come up with another street and develop another special assessment. So we also put an incentive in there that says any street that takes it upon themselves to put together, uh, um, a petition showing that they would approve the special assessment gets bumped up in the priority list. So again, we've got eligible streets, you know, we, we can't do every street. So if, you know, like I showed you the different categories. So like in the, the rehab category, seventy-five percent of the, of, of the mileage in the rehab category was going to get repaired. If those streets, if some of those streets give us a petition saying, hey, we're willing to do the ditches, their priority gets bumped up in, in that, in that particular queue.
So if one street says they don't want it, like for example, if my street votes it down, then you have the street over, say they're next, will be able to come up and take our place? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, I mean, yeah. Yeah, another, another, another street would get picked. And, and again, in terms of the prior, prioritization process, streets that, that tell us ahead of time that they're willing to, to do this are gonna save us a lot of effort, so we'll give them a little bump in the, in the priority.
Gotcha.
All right, so, so it's, it, 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 you know, we really felt, and, and we talked about this as a council when we approved, you know, the, the ballot last year. I mean, you know, we need to exercise the best judgment in using tax dollars and spending money on a road that's not going to last like it's supposed to is a waste of tax dollars. So we really shouldn't be doing that road if we can't do it appropriately. Um, and then in terms of, in terms of the, the cost, the actual estimates of cost. So, so one of the hard things about the special assessment, and I, I mentioned that this got really complicated really quickly, um, as we, as, as we got into the, into the weeds. Um, so the, the, the cost for, the estimated cost for a specific street is going to be dependent upon, A, the length of the street, and B, how densely packed the houses are. So if you have two streets with the same length, and one of them has a lot of houses to split the costs among, and, and another street has bigger lots and fewer houses, it's gonna be more expensive for the less densely packed area, and it's gonna be less expensive for the street that has a lot of houses. Okay, so, so that's, that's part of what goes into the estimate. Um, but what's going to control the actual cost is how good or bad the ditch is on a particular street. So we may, we may choose to do a particular road, and that ditch is functioning fine, that ditch system is functioning fine, they won't have any ditch, there won't, there won't be an SAD for them because their, their ditch, ditching, ditch is working well. Whereas if you have another street where the ditch isn't working well, they'll probably have higher costs 'cause there's a lot more work that has to be done on that particular segment.
And we wouldn't know, so basically, you wouldn't know the price of, um, the special assessment then until it was evaluated, until the, the ditch is evaluated? And then how many houses are on the street?
I've done all that work already. So, um, we do have estimates that go street segment by street segment. Okay, and this is, this is where things started to get a little bit complicated. Because as we got down to the granular level, what we were finding was there were a lot of small, you know, 'cause we're, we're not a rectilinear subdivision, you know, it's not all right angles. We've got streets coming in in every direction. And, and so what ends up happening is you've got a lot of very short segments. And sometimes, you, you, we get into a situation where we have segments where, um, you know, there are only two or three houses or one house. Or actually, we, I think there were fourteen segments that actually had no houses on them. Um, so, you know, we can't be asking people to, you know, cover the cost of, you know, fifteen hundred dollars a year for ten years. That's just, that's just unreasonable, you know, if you've only got one house or two houses on a particular segment. So what we're recommending is, is, is that we strive to do as much of the ditches as possible where it's not cost prohibitive. Okay, and so again, we have estimates for every street segment. Um, and so what we, what we recommended is that in instances where the, where the cost exceeds, and we, we threw out an approximate, approximate threshold of about four hundred dollars per year, um, we don't recommend that the, if it's greater, if, if, if it's greater than four hundred dollars a year, we don't recommend that that particular segment has to do their ditches. Okay, and so, so what that works out to be, it's about seventeen percent of the homeowners on those seven, seven miles would not have to have their ditches be, be done because it's, it's essentially cost prohibitive. And I did run this by Scott in terms of legality of, of, you know, some people having to do theirs and some people not having to do theirs. And we can get into that in a minute, but Scott kinda blessed, did bless this, but we'll talk about that in a second. Um, but for the other eighty-three percent, so the eighty-three percent of people who, where it's not cost prohibitive on that, on that seven point one miles of road, the average cost per year would be in additional two hundred and twenty-three dollars per year for ten years. Okay, so, Kelly, you look like you were gonna say...
No, I was just trying to look at your small screen to read what the average was for the streets. I was just trying to do it overall. Is that two twenty-three per year? No, that's repaired, ditch repaired.
Yeah, two hundred and, so the, the average for, for the majority of the people, for the eighty-three percent on those, on those seven miles of road that would get done over the three years, um, the average cost would be two hundred and twenty-three dollars per year for ten years. So if you, if you factor that in with the road proposal, those people who, whose roads are being done, again, I'm, I'm talking about the average household here, it'd be about four hundred and, I don't know, two twenty-three and two, roughly about five hundred dollars per, per year, um, for that group. Whereas people who live on roads that don't get done, it would only be the two hundred and sixty-three dollars per year.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to find, the overall, um, cost.
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be just a little, little bit under five hundred dollars, uh, on, on, on average. Again, some people will be higher, some people will be lower, um, but in terms of, in terms of the average, it would be under five hundred dollars. Now, one of the things that we can do, so, so part of the recommendation says that, you know, in addition, um, to the committee, each year recommending the roads that get done, the, the, the committee will also work on setting up the special assessment districts. And there are some creative things that we can do to, um, include some of those high-cost, you know, cost prohibitive locations in with other, other districts. So for example, if you've got a road, and I, I'm completely making this up, but if you've got a road, um, Kelly, what's the road you live on?
Not gonna give it out.
Lathrop Boulevard.
I'm like, San Quentin. Let's say we're talking about doing San Quentin.
Lathrop Boulevard.
I'm just kidding, La Crosse.
Okay, let's say we're talking about doing La Crosse between, um, you know, uh, Bloomfield and Santa Barbara. Okay, and, you know, that's a pretty densely packed, uh, street with lots of houses. So when we, when we went to set up the special assessment for the, for the ditches, it's gonna be more towards the two hundred and twenty-three 'cause there's a lot of houses there. But as you get on the Santa... But as you get on to Santa Barbara, as you turn south on to Santa Barbara, there may be two or three homes right there, you know, that were cost prohibitive on their own, but they're part of the exact same ditch system, it's contiguous with your ditch system, so it's working with, you know, the, the La Crosse ditch system. So, we can include those three houses and still stay around two hundred and twenty-three dollars per year. So, there are some creative ways that we'll be able to include some of those seventeen percent in with other districts. So, in reality, that, that seventeen percent of ditches that wouldn't get done will actually drop down lower once, once we start setting up the special assessment districts.
Gotcha.
Couple other things and then we can get into questions, because I'm sure you'll have a lot of them. For those streets that are cost prohibitive or streets that don't have, that aren't, aren't part of the seven miles, who roads are going to get done, so their ditches wouldn't get done under the scenario. One of the things that we would offer up is that if those streets wanted to take it upon themselves to ask for a special assessment, we would do their ditches at that time because it's going to be cheaper than if they do it five years from now. Because all of the equipment is mobilized, all the materials and person power are all on site, so if, if, you know, Cambridge was not on the street, street eligible list to have their streets done, but they wanted to have their ditch done, we could take advantage of that and offer that up to them. So, that's, that's one thing that we could do, you know, to improve the ditches that aren't included in those seven, seven miles. The other thing that we're recommending, and I don't know if Rami is still on, on the call or not, but we're also recommending, you know, the, the fact that there's a lot of, you know, the proposal last year was a ditch fit fix program. The proposal this year is a ditch improvement program. We're not going to be able to fix all the ditches with, with this program. We'll only be able to improve them. So, we also felt that, you know, the, the other road mileage outside the seven miles that would, would get repaired, there's a lot of simple things that can be done to improve those, those, those ditches. You know, in some cases, you know, like on my street, there's, there's one route that's, that's totally stopping all the water for the one side of the street. So, through code enforcement, we can address a lot of those simple things, you know, that aren't part of this particular project. And so, what, what we're recommending is that each year, one quadrant of Lathrop gets their, their ditches, you know, kind of reviewed by the, by the new code enforcer. And we should be able to make some significant improvements to the, the, the ditches that aren't part of the, you know, the seven point one miles. Let me see if I forgot anything else, I'm just scrolling through.
So, let me ask you this question. So, the ones that are not a part of the seven, the seven miles, the ditches, and you have the code enforcer go out, go out and evaluate those and find that those ditches do need to be repaired at a later time, I mean, are they still going to be in the same price range as the original special assessment? You get what I mean by that?
Well, I mean, the idea of the code enforcer, you know, going and doing the, the other, everything outside of those, those seven miles is, is to look for the simple things. So, the idea isn't, isn't to say, you know, okay, you guys on Sunnybrook, you know, you've got ditches that are, you know, graded the wrong way or not graded enough and you need to fix that. That, that's not a simple thing. I mean, because, you know, if you do grading, you've got to do the whole side of the street, you know, that, that's a pretty big effort. But if somebody's driveway culvert is completely plugged up or, you know, is, is ten inches above the ditch because it's heaved, or, you know, you've got a root in there, you know, you know, we, we know we've got some people who install very poor rain gardens and that's blocking the water, you know, those are the kinds of things that, that a code enforcer can, you know, simple kinds of things can, can, can address to help improve the remainder of the ditch system until, you know, ten years from now when we vote in another, you know, a, a road, road project and, and start to address, you know, other ditches. Or, or maybe we, you know, it gets so bad in five years, you know, or ten years, we, we do a, a specific ditch project or something like that. Who knows what the future will bring? But, you know, we, we felt we wanted to try to at least make some improvements in the, in the non-addressed areas. And we think now that we have the code enforcer, this is right up the sweet spot of the code enforcer.
Okay. Anyone have any?
I think that's the, the gist of it. The other thing I was just going to say too is, is, you know, we were a little concerned about the, you know, the legality of, you know, where, where it gets cost prohibitive or you've got, you know, two houses on a small segment where it would be eleven hundred dollars a year and saying those people don't have to get their ditches done while we say the people on La Crosse have to get theirs done. So, in, in discussions with Scott, and Scott, you can chime in if, if I'm saying anything incorrect, but, but Scott's thought was that, you know, technically, the people in my example of La Crosse did have an opportunity to not do their ditches by blocking, you know, the, the special assessment. Granted, the road wouldn't get done, but they still did have an opportunity to block it. So, Scott felt we were, you know, on, on solid ground by, you know, taking that approach. And, and Scott, if I said anything incorrectly or you have any comments, chime in.
I think, I think you pretty well summed it up, our discussion, so.
Yeah, so the ditches were a little, little bit more complex than, than the roads, but we kind of felt like we came up with a, you know, given all the complexities, where we, we came up with a, a solution that, that will be workable. You know, it's going to be a little bit of work, you know, for a couple of months each year to do the special assessments. But we will, you know, the, the committee will try to make as few special assessment districts as possible, you know, to, to minimize that work. Yeah, and I'll, I'll shut up and see if you guys have, have other questions.
Sorry, I'm mute. Anyone have any questions? That's why I was on mute.
William, any, anything that I, Gerald, anything I forgot you guys?
But, no questions, but I just, I guess I just wanted to add that I think one point of them was, was to come up with a workable plan that would have a good chance of passing. And that's kind of why longer plans are more costly, they were not going to be accepted. We, I think the committee didn't think that they would do it, it would be accepted and people would have voted for them. So, I think it's a good compromise plan. It's a good plan, you still get a good amount of roads done. Seven years of seven miles of roads or a ten-year payback in a three-year time period, I think that's good. I think it's enough roads, the shorter timeframe proposal was, was too short. I think this is enough that people will like it and I think it has a decent chance of being approved. I think it's a good proposal. I think Bruce did a ton of hard work, I think it's, it's pretty good. It's a good proposal.
I, I agree, Bruce. Great, great, great job and a lot of hard work. I'm just wondering, and if I missed this, I apologize, how is it going to be presented on the ballot? I'm assuming that both of these, will they have separate parts on the ballot, the individual parts on the ballot, or would they be combined on the ballot or? And I'm asking because I don't, you know, I'm wondering how we present it, where it doesn't look like we're trying to do two things, you know, where skeptics don't step in.
Yeah, so let me, let me, let me address that, Donna. So, so first of all, the, 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 the road piece will, oh, excuse me, the road piece will, will be on the ballot. That's something the voters will, will have to approve. The ballot language was included in the packet that you got today as well as the, the resolution that we would need, that we would need to pass on the twenty-seventh. The, the ditch part doesn't require voter approval. So, this is, this is going to be done via the special assessment process. So, so it's, it's two, you know, you can kind of think of it in some ways as two separate unrelated projects, except for the fact that we're trying to do them together to save the residents a lot of money.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Got it.
Just a quick question, because we haven't talked about sidewalks yet. So, that's a third separate standalone project. Do you have any, are you scheduling any kind of sidewalk repair in, in conjunction with, aligning with the road and the ditches? Or is this, is that going to be totally standalone, scheduled differently? And is it a special assessment?
So, the, the sidewalk program that we approved, I think a year ago, and that, that Cheryl's working on now for the summer, is, is a separate, separate program. Yeah, also, you know, the, you know, people can pay it via a special assessment as well. I think, what, what did we, I can't remember, Cheryl, is it a five-year maximum, three-year maximum? I forgot what, what.
We're looking at a five-year.
Yeah, five-year.
Okay, how's that going to be rolled out, by the way? Not to sidetrack what you just discussed, but as far as the road, the sidewalk.
What we had, what we had approved last year was that we were going to do, start by doing the business corridor this summer. So, you know, Southfield Road sidewalks, eleven mile, twelve mile, and then addressing one quadrant of the city over the next four subsequent summers.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry about that. Can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. The other computer decided to just die right then and there. Um, I have to try to figure this out. I had a question and I forgot it.
Yeah, the other, the other thing too, you know, I guess I didn't, I assumed you guys would know this, but I, it was probably not, not an assumption I should have made just because we, we, and, and the committee are talking about it a, a lot. But the other, the other, you know, advantage of, you know, this plan, should it, should it get approved, is, is that, you know, the, you know, normally we do a transfer from the general fund to the, I'm sorry, normally we do a transfer from the, our major road fund to our local road fund to pay for our summer road projects. Because this, this project would be a standalone project, we wouldn't need to make that transfer from the major roads to the local roads, which would allow us to bank the Act Fifty-One major money that we get for the, you know, the eleven-mile road project, which will be coming, you know, down the Pike in the next, you know, three, two, three, four years, you know, which is currently estimated at about one point three million. So, it does give us the ability to, you know, to, to bank some money up for that.
Any other questions, concerns?
Sounds like a solid plan. Good job on that, Bruce. I would have much rather do twenty years than fifteen miles, but I was not on the committee, so.
I, I, I would too, but, you know, it was, was just a feeling that, that it would have more difficulty passing. But, you know, the, the, the reality is, you know, you know, so, so let, let's say we do this project and we do seven miles, you know, we pay it off over, over ten years and ten years, or even before ten years, if people wanted to do it, we could address another seven-mile project and, and do it in the second ten years. So, you know, in so, in some ways, it's, 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 you know, breaking it up in, into pieces. So, it's, it's not that we can't do it, it's just, we're just not voting on it now. We'd have to vote on it in ten years or, you know, maybe a little bit earlier if people wanted, you know, wanted the roads done quicker. I mean, I guess the only, the only disadvantage of breaking it up like that is in, you know, ten years, it's going to be more expensive.
Right. Exactly, yeah. So, you said it's, it's the, the, the infrastructure part of the road project doubled, even though you're doing, if we would have said, if we decided to have done fifteen miles of road, you said that would have doubled. So, is that doubling based on the first proposal? You know, the, the, the total mile of road? Or are you looking at the doubling on the standalone current conditions?
So, the, the, anyway you look at it, so if you, if you take, if you take our, our project, which is ten years and it's four mils, and if you, actually, let me go the other way, it's easier for me to think the other way. So, if, if we did, if we did a twenty, we did fourteen miles of road, fifteen miles of road.
Fifteen, yeah.
At, at four mils over twenty years. Okay? So, if we double the, the mileage and half the time, I'm not saying this right.
You're halving, you're halving the mileage and doubling the time.
Right.
Yes.
Right, right. So, so, so anytime, so if, if we, so if you just take this proposal that we have right now and we say in ten, for ten years, and we want to keep it at ten years and we wanted to, you know, do fourteen, fifteen miles, which I think was your original question, the mileage rate is essentially going to double because we're doubling the amount of roadwork. Now, if we stretch that over twenty years, then it stays the same. And that's, that's, that's what we had as the, as the, the one plan option that people, you know, on the committee and, and didn't, didn't vote for. So, that's, you know, anyway you slice it, it's, you know, you, you half one, you double the other.
Right, so the twenty-mile option is more attractive, but people didn't see it as being attractive. The committee didn't see that as being attractive. I got that, okay.
And I, I get it, I get it, you know, it's, you know, people don't want to be locked into something for twenty years. You know, it's, it's, it's a valid concern.
Yep, I understand that. Okay. Thank you.
Is there any other discussion or questions regarding it? The roads discussion, I should say. Okay, then we will, this will be on the agenda for July twenty-seventh?
Yeah. So, let me, let me, let me ask a question about the July twenty-seventh meeting. How, how do we want to, how, how do we want to position that? Because obviously, you know, council meeting, people will be watching, I mean, do, do we want to go through the same thing we just went through now? Do you want me to explain it in detail or, you know, a high-level overview? You know, I mean, obviously, we'll put all these documents on the website so that people can read them and we can reference people to them. But I, I guess I'm just thinking in terms of, and, and if you don't want to talk about it now, if you want to talk about it in the ensuing couple of weeks, we can, we can do that. But I just wanted to gloss on, on how we position this during the actual council meeting.
I'll dive in.
I think we can talk about it offline, or how we can position it for the council meeting. I think also, we probably, and, and this is just a recommendation, maybe even think about doing a quick Zoom meeting, town hall for another explanation of this, just, I mean, of this only. Or even if there's some type of video that you, I think you did a video before, that you can do that possibly could go on the website, that can go, you know, the city-sponsored Facebook, but, you know, there's just ways that we can get the information out that's going to be voted on, on the twenty-seventh. But we can talk about it on how you want to do it because you're right.
Yeah. And we, and we did, we did do three, three town halls. I think the last one we did was two weeks ago. So, you know, again, I, I, I'm sure we'll get some pushback about people saying they didn't know about it and so forth, but, I mean, you know, I, I thought we did a good job, you know, with the, the last election. This election, we've done a really good job of announcing the meetings, you know, at the, you know, before COVID hit, our, our meetings were very well attended. You know, we did the, the three town halls and unfortunately, we didn't get, you know, we figured, you know, people are at home, that was during the lockdown, some of it, we were thinking people were going to be home doing nothing, that the town hall was, you know, going to be mobbed, but they were, the attendance was, was low, but we did have three of them and they were announced, so.
Yeah. But those town hall meetings were also, was to discuss the options that you all had, not the one that you're actually recommending, right?
Well, we, we did discuss this particular option during that meeting, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, if I'm not mistaken, it was the three different options that you were discussing, and that this one that I'm talking about would be specifically this one only for questions or whatever, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, is to have another town hall or additional ones kind of presenting, okay, this is what our, this is what our recommendation is, this is what's going to be voted on, educate the people about just this specific plan.
Agreed. So, we'll get together to figure out how we're going to do that for the twenty-seventh. Up next, go ahead.
You'll have the whole committee. You'll have the whole committee in that town hall, correct?
Yeah, we did.
And, I mean, you will, once you guys decide the town hall date and everything, you will.
We're gonna discuss if that's, you know, what we're gonna do, so I mean, the goal would be for them to be there, but I think Bruce is handling it just fine.
Okay, got you. Oh, I'm not making any recommendations, I was just asking a question, that's all.
I got you, I got you. Um, up next is the marijuana study group recommendation.
Hello, everyone. Yeah, we, we met as a committee again this past week and came up with the recommendations. I guess I want to maybe present some of the background for everyone. Are we able to share screens, Cheryl? I'll email you some stuff in case I can't share, but if I can share.
While you're doing that, somebody, somebody's got a lot of background noise going on. If you could mute your phone, it's hard to hear.
I think it may be Saleem, I think it's Saleem's.
It was me, because I had a printer going.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
Anyways, Cheryl, can I show a document, you think? Or share a screen? Let me try it. You gonna see this?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alrighty, okay, so this is kind of a summary of our, of our research. Research done by the marijuana committee, the study group. So, the first part of this document just talks about our purpose, which was to research issues relating to opting in and allowing use or the operation of marijuana-related businesses in the city. And we wanted to make a recommendation to the council before the sunset period runs out, which is end of September. So our only task is to determine if allowing marijuana businesses in the city would be beneficial to the city or not. So we're not here to give our opinion on the morality of it, if it's right or wrong, those kind of things, right? So that's kind of what we looked at as a committee in coming to a recommendation. Timeline, this talks, this shows that end of the sunset period is the twenty-eighth. We wanted to come up with a recommendation by July city council meeting. So we have the research to date, and we've got, I've got a document that I'm gonna send to Cheryl. Cheryl, I made some tweaks to it, so I'll send you the link probably tomorrow, or the next day, that we can post online or on our website, so people can see it. But, you know, we have it in different sections. First section talks about the Michigan enacted law, so we know marijuana is, recreational marijuana is legal in Michigan. We know the voters voted in favor by a sixty-three to thirty-seven percent margin in the two thousand eighteen vote. There's different types of licenses that are allowed under the regulations. There's regulations that have been extended through July, or at least to July, and I don't know if they've extended past July yet, but we can find that out. So there's, it's legal in the state, there's different types of facilities and ways to do business. They listed here, grow facilities where you grow the plant. Those are bigger-type facilities, you need a lot of space, not ideal for a city like ours, which is a small city. We don't have a lot of buildings with a lot of space, or a lot of land with a lot of space for that. Processing facility was required, those types of businesses process the plants into other types of usable product, you know, for smoking, for oils, for, you know, edibles, those kind of things. Testing and compliance facility is a, is a business that asks the product for compliance under the state regulations, make sure they're compliant with state regs, make sure they're safe. So those types of facilities do that, they're typically high-tech businesses with, you know, expensive equipment and pretty highly-trained people. They don't need a ton of space. They don't have a lot of plants or products on hand, or a lot of cash on hand, because they're testing small samples. Then we have the provisioning centers for medical, for recreational, they sell medical marijuana, they sell recreational marijuana. Then you have transportation businesses that transport, this is a secure transport of cash or, you know, the marijuana products. Those types of businesses are out there, the licenses are available to be granted for those types of businesses. The financial part of the financial, I'm trying to see if I can move this thing down, I don't see how. Hold on one second. So anyways, the financial benefits are, I'll just read off mine. So you can get license fees for these, you know, businesses. So if we, we allow the businesses into the city, we can have license fees, application fees. Other cities we've talked to charge, you know, sometimes five to ten thousand per application, you know, for separate applications for the medical marijuana, for recreational, different types of businesses. So those fees can be, you know, fairly significant. If you have like, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty applicants, those fees add up. So it could be a substantial revenue generator for the city. I'm gonna stop sharing for a second. Just give me a second here. I'm gonna scroll down on this.
Lynn, can I ask a question while you're scrolling? And maybe this is a question for, for Scott, and I, Scott, I've asked you this at least a half dozen times, and I can never remember the answer, so I apologize. Under medical or recreational, one of them, if you allow one, you have to allow all, and then, you know, the different types of businesses, and then the other one, you can pick and choose, which is which?
So originally, it was under medical, you can pick and choose. Under recreational, if you allowed one, you had to allow for all. But I believe they've amended that, and they do now allow for picking and choosing of both based on your local ordinance and your zoning restrictions.
Okay, good to know, thanks.
And let me add to that, so for medical, there's no excise tax, so there's zero benefit for the city. So recreational, obviously, that's where the excise tax is on that side. So if we were going to opt-in for recreational, opt-in for medical, because obviously, you've got a card-carrying person, and they're gonna end up purchasing recreational anyway. So it wouldn't be a detriment to just opt-in for both.
Right, but you can, you can charge a separate application fee for both, right?
You, you actually, yes, you would double your application fee. So if we charge five grand for one type of business, if that was two, then that would be ten grand.
Yeah, so that's, that's, alright, so that's kind of what this next session, can you guys see the screen still?
Yeah.
Okay, so the financials, we talked about the application fees, as Ian just said, only recreational has the excise tax, which is a ten percent revenue based on a formula. You know, the formula allocates, you know, first big piece to administering the laws and the act, and then there's a big piece that goes towards research and educational. Then, you know, along the line, the cities get a piece of it, they get ten percent of the sales that get allocated down to the municipalities based upon the, the number of stores or facilities that they have.
Give me one second, can you just make your screen a little bit bigger, because I'm having trouble seeing the, um.
Oh, just zoom in a little, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, hold on one second.
Hallie, are you, are you on an iPad?
Yep.
I'll go down to the bottom.
You can pitch and expand your iPad screen to make it larger or smaller.
The screen is fine, his wording on, I mean, I can see everything else on my screen, but is that particular document is just too small.
Oh, that's good right there.
Yep, that's much better.
Okay, so, yeah, so the recreational is where you're gonna see the excise tax come into play. And that's gonna be, potentially, it could be, you know, a revenue generator for the city. Right now, with the cities that we've spoken to, they've made money off the application fees, license fees, that whole process. No one's really seen the excise tax yet, just because I think everything's new, and the city, the state hasn't started, you know, paying it out at this point. At least the people that we've talked to haven't seen it. I don't know if you've heard anything different, Scott, on that side?
Well, the way, the way it was written, that, and I don't have the exact dollar amounts in front of me, but the first five million dollars, or whatever the dollar amount is, is to go into a specialized fund for health, education, prevention. And then after that, once that threshold is met, then the monies will be divvied up and distributed per the, the formula that was in the, in the language, ballot language.
Yeah, so maybe that's, so the first, they were in that stage still, then, that money's being allocated towards that, that, that fund or that, that use, that, before it gets trickled down to the, to the cities. So financially, those are some benefits. The other benefit we've seen is there's, there's been at least one study that has shown in a couple of cities that their property values have actually increased since they've allowed marijuana facilities to operate, both business property values and residential property values. So, interesting, I mean, it's, I'm not saying, I haven't seen like, you know, multiple, like, report studies like that, but there's at least been one, and I've read about it. We've talked about it as a committee, that that's potentially a benefit, financial benefit.
And wasn't it pretty substantial in one community? I think, I think that was in the, uh,
MML, I believe.
That we all get.
Yeah, it was in there, and it was, it was very substantial, and they, it gets, that increase keeps growing, growing to that city, and they keep projecting, I mean, their projections, but their projections have, you know, been blown out of the water with the increase in the values. So that's significant for people in the, in the city, that obviously, we all want our property values to be as high as possible, right? So.
Unless you're paying a millage on that property value.
Yeah. The costs, I mean, financial costs, to us as a committee, I mean, seem fairly minimal. I mean, there's gonna be some administrative costs, I'm sure, with handling this, the process of applications and that kind of thing. There could be potential additional police, law enforcement costs related to just maybe just increased policing of the, making sure those facilities are safe, nobody's, you know, targeting them and those kind of things. But that'll lead me to the next section here. So we talked of a lot of other cities, I mean, at least four or five other cities, and we've got all this documented, and in the other document I talked about, we will upload it, and it'll summarize all our discussions with the various cities. But my first point there, all the cities officials we've spoken with have had a positive experience overall since allowing marijuana businesses into their cities. And they recommend that we, we do it as well. And Ian's been on calls with me, our committee's been on calls, and really, not one of them said, no, it's been really bad, don't do it. Definitely, there's been issues, but on an overall basis, they've been very happy with, with doing, with allowing it into the city, and they have been happy with the results. A couple of the items, they say the quality of the businesses that have come in have been pretty high. These cities can share their ordinances and policies with us, we've got connections with the right, you know, people there, and we can, we can get those ordinances and have them work with our city attorney with Scott, and make sure it's buttoned down as possible. They have not seen an increase in crime overall since allowing businesses into the city. The police departments in most of these cities, or in some of them, were not in favor of allowing these businesses, but have been supportive of the city's decision, and the police department, and we've spoken to three chiefs, including our own. So the two chiefs that have had the businesses in their city have not seen an increase in crime at all, and have had, have not seen really any problems related to having these businesses in the city. There haven't been a big, significant level of complaints. I think one person, one city we talked with, they did have a, an order issue, but I think the facility rectified it, and that hasn't been a problem after that. Traffic is an issue, it's a big issue. Cities have seen an increase in traffic, in which that would be a challenging thing for a city like ours, right? Where we have traffic and parking issues already. That is an issue that, if we were to do it, we need to deal with that, we need to figure out a plan to deal with it. But that is an issue, because these have a lot of, a lot of volume, a lot of people coming in, especially since the COVID crisis. You know, it's, it's all a drive-up, you know, so there's a lot of cars that come in, they drive up, they wait, and then they get their, whatever they're buying, and then they leave. So there's been a lot more traffic actually since the COVID crisis. But overall, and unless Ian had to, too, because he was on a lot of these calls with me. Overall, we've talked to a mayor, we've talked to city council people, we've talked to other members of these various cities, we've talked to police chiefs. Overall, I would say that they've all gave us a very favorable impression. What do you think, Ian?
Yeah, I, I concur, Saleem, I just wanted to give council just kind of the backstory. So when we finally got the committee together, we said, okay, we're gonna get the facts based on this business, see what the facts, where the facts lead us, right? And the first order of business is to really talk to the police. What are they seeing, you know, what the issues would be if we thought this business would actually locate into Lathrow Village? So obviously, we were thinking, okay, maybe crime has gone up, maybe we've got some issues with, you know, people in the parking lot, those kind of things, right? So first order of business was to talk to the chief of police at two of the cities. And right off the bat, they said they haven't had any issues in crime, the bigger problem, and, and there are nuances here, right? So the bigger problem was traffic. You know, one chief said it could be a problem for one city, the next city said, hey, we don't have any, we, we don't think it's a problem, but there has been increased traffic. So that's, that's kind of the approach we took, and then at the same time, we leveraged the, the mayor of, of one of the cities and the city managers for several other cities that we talked to, just trying to get an input on the process. How difficult was it for them, what they saw as far as roadblocks, whether there were lawsuits, whether there were issues with council not understanding the process, whether they even had problems with the council. And all of that is documented in the, the presentation that Saleem has before you. So overall, we, we had an open mind to try to get the information and then bring it back the way we saw it, the way the facts led us, right? So if the facts would have led us another way, we would be presenting that way.
Yep, it's all about the facts. So go ahead.
What cities did you, um, talk to? Which cities did you get your information from?
We spoke to Hazel Park, Ferndale, um, Lake, River Rouge.
River Rouge. Wald Lake, we spoke to, yeah, Wald Lake, River Rouge. Let me see, I think, let me just look at my documentation.
Yeah, it was Wald Lake, River Rouge, Ferndale, and Hazel Park. We talked to those administrations, and then the police, right, were they at those?
Yeah, so the police chief of Hazel Park we spoke to, as well as the mayor of Hazel Park. We spoke to the police chief of Wald Lake, and the city manager of Wald Lake, and also Ferndale, River Rouge. I think Don spoke to the city manager and the city attorney of River Rouge. I think actually, we have it captured here, so.
Yeah.
How, how long had any of them been open? Did you, did you manage the, how long?
Yeah.
In order to get an assessment?
Yep.
Yeah, we asked, some of the, some of the cities have medical provisioning centers that have been open for, you know, a longer period, a couple of years, I think. Obviously, the recreational ones are all pretty new. The whole thing is pretty new. The recreational ones are pretty new. The medical one's been open longer. They've, they've got, all these cities have applications and process. They've had issues with, you know, validating their ordinances, and, you know, they've had to kind of make sure that everything's being done in a fair way, otherwise, you could have potential where people think if they're not treated, being treated fairly, they're gonna file a lawsuit. So that's happened in a couple of these cities. So what we've been advised is, you know, make sure the ordinances are buttoned up, use other cities' ordinances. So what we've been advised is, you know, make sure the ordinances are buttoned up, use other cities' ordinances, see what they've done. You've got a list of a couple, two or three cities that have done a really good job for what we've heard on their ordinances. So if we were to do it, we leverage those contacts and those ability to get those kind of, you know, sample ordinances or their actual ordinances and and use those. So, go ahead.
Say again?
I didn't want it, someone else was talking.
No, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so the timeframe is what I'm interested in when when people, you know, when see, and first of all, great job, I see you guys have have worked very hard, very diligently, but I'm concerned about the timeframe when when cities say they haven't had trouble. And the I guess the location would be the 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 issue in terms of, you know, traffic. Is I know we we didn't, so I would like to, I didn't hear any potential locations that you're talking about, because I think that's essential. But and our police chief, you said was, I guess I'm saying three things, our police chief was pretty okay with with it as well.
Yeah, let me. So sorry, Salim. So let me address the first one. So the timeframe in Wald Lake. So they started in two thousand nine, two thousand ten, they actually started with three medical dispensaries. And then they expanded out through to to provision, which is recreational. So they're calling them provisioning centers, right? So from two thousand nine to to current, they have had zero police issues, with the exception of one crank phone call. And that was deemed just some angry person that called at random. They did not, they haven't had any police issues at all. As far.
But when did they get their recreation? When was the recreational for them?
Well, recreational was just passed recently, so.
They were one of the first.
But my point is, is that even if we're, you have no issues because it's medical, that would be limited to who can go there, technically.
No, they started, they, no, but they started with medical and then they expanded out through recreational.
I understand that. I'm just saying that two thousand nine, two thousand ten, though they have medical, the people that would come there or the traffic they would see for that would be limited, because that would be for, you know, technically, it would be for licensed marijuana, medical marijuana users. Where when it comes for residential, we, there really cannot be, and and correct me if I'm wrong, there's really no data that's really gonna show us right now, substantial data that's gonna show us what the criminal, you know, any criminal activities going on, because no one's really had it for more than, what, not even a year, right?
Right, but I'm sure there are.
That was my point. That was my point.
That that has to do with Michigan, but I'm sure, and if you haven't, you guys, you guys can. You know, look at other states like Colorado, Washington, states that have had it for a little bit of time, and what what their crime incidence has been with 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 recreation.
Well, that's what my 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 point was going in that, because I have a few notes about this totally, is that I understand that we were talking to people locally of how it was going, and of course, if this is the decision that we, the council chooses to take up, then, you know, these are the type of things that I think that we should know. And that is involving calling other states, other cities to see, you know, the the statistics of crime, the the statistics of traffic, the statistics of how much money that, you know, that they, wasn't beneficial to the city to actually go into recreation, you know? So and then also, my other concern is, I shouldn't say concern, my thoughts are with the four locations that you that you went to. Each one of these, if I'm not mistaken, except with maybe the exception of Ferndale, but I can't tell. Each one of these have locations, or the way that the city is set up, where it could be set apart from residents. You know, where they have large buildings or they have facilities that you know, it it's basically away from residents. Where, for example, when I went over Bruce's house, I finally figured out what he was talking about, because soon as I stepped out the car, I could smell it, you know? And so that's my concern also, that based off of these four, we also have to look at our our infrastructure for for buildings and locations and and things like that. So I would just be curious of, one, cities that have had recreational marijuana for a while, which obviously that's not gonna be in Michigan, and then also a city is more or less that's on our side, on our size wise. Because that's where I I I guess that's my only concern of where this would be located. I know that you brought that up before. So that's my first set of questions.
Okay, I think, yeah, so I need to answer the first part of it. So recreation was passed in March in Wald Lake. There there is a, okay, so recreation was passed in March in Wald Lake, number one. Colorado, we, I have some research and I think I forwarded that to the group. I was trying to find it here. So we can, I can present it, if you can give me some time, but I'll just address the questions. So Colorado, initially, when they first started recreation marijuana, they had issues of infrastructure, trying to get it organized. But over time, they haven't had any issues as far as crime, as far as theft, as far as just in 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 inside jobs, if you want to say it that way, right? They haven't had major issues with teenagers accessing provisioning centers, that's recreational marijuana. Because of the laws that are in place. So I can try to give you some data on that, just if you can let me look for it. As far as Michigan, when you speak of the issue that Bruce is having with his neighbor, they're not getting their marijuana, and I'm pretty confident they're not getting it at a provisioning center. And in general, with cities that have marijuana issues with teenagers, they don't get them at provisioning centers. More than likely, they're getting them with with adult, what do you call?
No, that's not, that's not my concern in that one. I'm thinking of, because it was in your, in the summary of saying that about the the smell of it, that they got it under control, the business got it under control. I'm just saying, if that was what I smelled from a resident, what is the smell going to be from a business? And I guess that's, you know, because I'm I'm simply going off of what your summary was about, it was somewhere on the other document saying about the smell of it.
Well, we can. Businesses have, excuse me, businesses have filtration systems, they have mechanisms in place to specifically address that. And that is, it's an issue that cities have had and would bring up with these businesses, but the businesses need to have mechanisms to handle that, not allow or smell or odor to come out of their facilities. And you really, you don't, there's there's not allowed to smoke in the parking lots of these facilities. The provisioning or the processing center, the testing centers, they have those filtration systems that prevent the orders from coming out. Depends what types of facilities you have, and the businesses you allow in and the ordinances you enact. That can help prevent these things. And I, I mean, it's a good point, Charlie, that, you know, we're a small city and residents, residents are right there, right behind our main street, so you know, it's an issue, but, I mean, Wald Lake is a small city too, a tiny city. The other ones aren't as small as us, but I think from what we've, who we've spoken to, that that issue has not been a big issue.
That's, well, the mayor of Hazel Park, so even though Hazel Park's larger than us, they still have provisioning centers that that buffer the residential area. So they don't have all provisioning centers in a specific, I would say, commercial district. It is lined at the buffer of the residential area. So Hazel Park is not our size, but Wald Lake is more like our size. And I think they've allotted some some ordinances to only open in a certain area, but it's confines of the residential, buffering the residential. It's not exclusive to a certain area.
Can I make a couple of comments?
Yeah.
I think it's our size, but I don't think it's it's our, it's it's made up the way that we're made up. It's the Wald Lake is where I, where I go to church and they just have much more land, etc. But I I had a question too about the report from Colorado. And I'm, I I've heard a different report, so what I'm gonna do is send you what what I've heard, I've heard it did affect. And I'm not, you know, I'm really being open minded, but I'm also trying to see longevity and not just listen to folk that have just opened. But I heard kind of the opposite at one of our council meetings up in Grand Rapids, that there was some issues in Colorado. So I don't think it's as you know, clean as as it is. I I hear it was hitting the the young people, but I just wanted to insert that, and I'll try to find that information again for you.
And did we do, I mean, I I don't, I I'm not sure, but did we do a survey? For, I mean, a more recent survey?
No.
For the residents?
No, we didn't do a survey yet. We discussed that at our last meeting. Last meeting, we were discussing, okay, let's look at all this research, what do we think? Do we have enough information to make a recommendation? Should we do a survey? Committee decided not to do a survey at this point, and by reason of we know that the legalization vote was sixty-three to thirty-seven, so it's pretty heavily favored. There was a survey done last year in two thousand nineteen, which was basically fifty-fifty of saying the the residents approved of it was over fifty percent they approved, they would approve of a medical marijuana facility, it was just under fifty percent that they'd approve a recreational marijuana facility. There's some questions of, you know, is the survey gonna give us accurate results or material results, would people answer, can we control who's responding? I I think we can, and my, and our suggestion, our our answer to that was, let's let's give a recommendation based on, you know, what we know, what we've researched, what we know the residents think about marijuana in general as far as being legal. Let's give our recommendation now and if the council wants to present it to them, if they want us to do a survey or have more town halls and things like that, then we can do that.
So what, you know, I'm gonna assume, because I'm giving the recommendation tonight, that this is supposed to be on our agenda for the twenty-seventh for approval, right?
That was the plan.
Yeah, so I I personally, and I know I'm sticking my neck out there, out here for, is that I don't know if I have enough information to honestly make a to how I would vote on this, to be quite truthful, because I really am still in the middle of the road. I I I don't know what I'm looking for or what I I'm trying to hear, but
What information are you looking for specifically? Are you looking for the Colorado information?
No, I'm looking to know what the pros and cons are, you know, we opt in, what's all the pros? I mean, valid, data-driven pros, you know, and actually more pros, because I know we're already opted out of it. But it's just for my comfort, because, you know, another thing is, this is, you know, this is on our head, this doesn't work out, right?
Well.
You know?
Yeah, I agree.
I'm out of here soon, I'm stoked.
So so let me just, let me just, I think I can address this as an advisor, so, and I think Salim captured it here. So and and we can extract it and we can send it to council, however you want us to do it. So the pros of opting in, so you're leveraging an excise tax for provisioning centers, which is recreational, right? You you don't have an increase in crime. That was a major issue with all these cities, even the cities that had opted out. And even Lathir Village, we had some concerns, because we had no idea, but after doing the research, there's absolutely no increase in crime. And I can also use Colorado as an example, and I'll try to get that information out to you. So there's no increase in crime. There is no.
I think we better be careful with saying there's no increase in in crime, because that's not, that's not accurate, because it's not, it's only been a year, you know, that some of these had, so.
Well, it's it's an accumulative data, so we're talking about medical and recreational, we're talking about the business in general. So there are five stages of that business. Okay, so if you want to narrow in and talk only about provisioning centers, which is not what we're talking about, let's be very clear on everybody's agenda. We're talking about five different parts of the business. We're talking about recreational, we're talking about medical, we're talking about distribution, we're talking about testing, and we're talking about grow. So obviously, grow is not a part of this discussion, because we already said on Salim's documentation that we're too small to grow, okay? So now we're talking about only four parts of that business. So that's recreational, that's provisioning, oh, sorry, recreational, medical, trucking, which is distribution. And the last part of that is testing, okay? So based on those four business criteria, and we're talking from the start of medical, there has been one incident in Wald Lake. And they actually had another incident in their in their medical marijuana center where they had a customer that didn't want to pay. That was it. That's based on the chief's assessment of from two thousand nine to twenty nineteen. They've only had two issues. Hazel Park has had zero issues from the time they started to currently. And they only have one growth center, and that growth center probably will open up at the end of August or September. So we're talking about four different parts of the business. Now, if we're gonna narrow it down and say, well, we're talking about recreational or medical, that's not an accurate view of it. And and I think Salim's documentation is proving that. We're saying we're opening this business up to the city, and it's not a detriment. So the the cons of that is high traffic, you do have traffic, so as a council, we will have to determine where we're gonna put this dispensary or actually, there's no traffic for distribution, okay? There's no traffic for testing. Testing is is as small as a lab where you go and get a blood test. They don't even carry they don't carry a quantity of of product. They're testing a percentage of the product. For example, if a provisioning center is selling fifteen pounds of that product, they're taking point five percent of that product. There's no smell in testing, right? Because they don't have product, right? There's no place to store product, because there is no product to store. Once you test it, you destroy the product or you return the product the way it is. That's point five percent.
Let me ask, let me.
That's testing.
Let me ask the question. What are, what is our, what should our goal be as a committee right now to? What did we opt out of? Do we opt out of allowing recreational marijuana, or do we opt out of allowing all marijuana businesses?
Currently, we're opted out of all marijuana businesses. They're they're, up until just a couple of months ago, cities weren't able to regulate medical marijuana caregivers, and that through zoning ordinances, that just recently, there's a case that came out, just recently changed that. Which is going to complicate further. So I know that all of the communities that you spoke with already have ordinances in place. I anticipate that there's gonna be a combination, so so basically creating new ordinances that deal with both medical and recreational marijuana, based on the outcome of that Byron Township case. And I think because it deals with, you can now charge fees, you can regulate caregivers, as long as they're reasonable and non-discriminatory, so there's gonna be some challenges and questions about that. And I think, I know I said this before, but time is going to be an important determinant, and that, again, I advocate not necessarily being the the first person to try out that new ordinance, because you will, you will become the target if there are challenges. It will incur additional legal cost. It it just kind of to talk on Don's point, I I have also seen, and I can share with with Cheryl, and she can share with council, a significant amount of data from from Colorado, which tends to support that there have been overall increase in crime, not necessarily crime at the at the locations, but instances of operating while impaired or use of drugs, an increase in the use in younger children. There's, there is a lot of data out there that tends to indicate that. There's also data out there that tends to support that the cost associated with doesn't necessarily outweigh the the revenue received from the licensing. So, so there's a lot of mixed data that's out there.
Yeah, so I guess my, my point was, so I think that was my understanding, that we opted out of marijuana businesses. So as a committee, now we're saying, I think, you know, we voted on that we should allow marijuana facilities in the business, or facilities in the city, not saying which ones necessarily right now. We're not saying we should have like two recreational provisioning centers. But we're saying, I think the committee has said, yes, we think it's a good idea to have marijuana-related businesses in the city, and we decide which ones we want.
Right.
Figure out, you know, more research needs to be done, or applications need to be received, or we need to outline, what do we exactly want here? We haven't done that yet. We haven't said, hey, we should only have like, you know, a testing lab, or we should have a two recreational dispensaries, or marijuana, or a medical dispensaries. We're kind of looking at it on overall, saying, okay, we opted out of marijuana businesses. We change that before the sunset date happens.
Right.
Or the yes to change that. Um, yeah, I mean, Colorado data, we looked at other states a little bit, and we can look at it more. Our focus was, my focus is more of what's been happening since this became legal in Michigan. That's kinda what we looked at. That's what, yeah, and it's only been a short timeframe, but I mean, you got, you can only do what you're gonna do. I mean, there's only been, it's only been around for a year or whatever that, that time is. So um, you know, that's, that's the timeframe that we, we deal with. We find that we ask for the data that this, these cities have as of now. In Michigan, it's been pretty positive. Yeah, if you want us to look more like Colorado and other states, we can do that. We've done it to some extent, but we can.
So I guess my question is this, and maybe it's just me, um, where, do we have enough information? Does everyone on council feel comfortable in voting for it in two weeks? Just based off of where we are right now?
I do not. I, I, for me, I don't.
Um, as a, well, we haven't completed the, the um presentation yet, but from a council perspective, based on being uh an advisor on the committee and also making a decision based on the four areas that we are, we were focused on, not just provisioning centers, because I hear you two arguing about provisioning centers. I don't hear.
No, you don't, you don't hear me arguing about provisioning centers at all. You hear me, um, and I'm not arguing. I'm, I'm simply trying to get an understanding of whether or not marijuana, period, that business should be for later, regardless of what it is. I have questions on it. And um, so that's not accurate. But my thing is, when it comes to, and this is what my question was, was if it's recommended tonight, then my, my understanding is you're wanting us to vote on it um by the twenty-seventh. And if the research is not completed, then how can we vote on it on the twenty-seventh? If we have, or we're not finished with the, with, if the committee's not finished researching what they need to?
Well, let me just add the, let me answer the first question. So the question is, do we have enough data? Clearly, we can get more data. I mean, I can't say that we didn't get enough data. But then again, we, if we needed more time, if we needed, if we think we needed more time, we would have taken that. But the data that we've seen is reflective and it's consistent across the board in every city that we've talked to in Michigan. So I think we have enough data based on the four business criteria, the four business segments in marijuana. So from a council, if we're going to opt in, then the next step really is to take it back to the committee and, and ask, which one of those businesses are we focused on? And, and I think we have enough data. However, if we need additional data, if you're telling us you want specific data on Colorado, is it just recreational that they're having issues? Is it testing? Is it trucking? Then we would have to go get that data. But from my perspective, I think we have enough information.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think we have enough information. I think we've completed our research. I think we've done a lot of research. That's why we voted, and that's why we made a recommendation. So, you know, we will present that more detailed data. I'll have it posted this week, and you guys can, everyone on the council can look at it. And yeah, we want you to vote. We want the council to vote in two weeks. If in two weeks, people are not comfortable with voting, or, you know, on voting for it, then we can talk about it at the meeting. And potentially, the council and even me, or Ian, can say, yeah, we don't, we don't have, we do have more questions, let's not vote today, right? I mean, you don't have to vote on it next week, do we? Or we can put it on the agenda, but if people have discussions on those issues, we can send it back and say, well, let's go back and look at this issue or that issue. But, I mean, from my perspective, I think, I think we have enough research. I think if we present it to the full council and they look at it, um, you can look, you can look at it and make your decision.
And also, let me just add regarding um how the business will eventually get set up, and it's also set up like this in other cities. If we opt in and we begin this process, and we, let's just say we open up a test lab, and it doesn't work out, we're not totally locked in for the rest of our lives. It's an annual renewal issue, uh, or we can bake that in. We know we could bake that in, because all other cities do it. So that business has to come before council or a, a committee to determine whether or not they've adhered to all the ordinances that are in place. If they didn't, or if they can't, then we reject, and then we're out. We can officially be out after a year. It's not like we're voting and we're in, and we, you know, we wash our hands and we move on. That's not the issue here. This is a continuous, dynamic process. Every year, council has to make a decision. It's not a rubber stamp process, and every city that we talked to has already confirmed that.
So, and then maybe I totally, um, my expectations for the committee was completely um something different. I didn't know, and Scott, this might be a question to you. Once you, oh, once you opt in, do you have to specify what you're opting in for, or is it just the overall opting in?
So, so now you can, uh, you can specify that we're going to be opting in, uh, we're going to allow for testing facilities, we're going to allow for provisioning centers, w- we're going to allow one testing facility, two provisioning centers, but uh no grow, grow facilities. It's, you could, you have a little bit more freedom now than you previously, it was previously perceived that you did. Uh, that's the question Bruce asked earlier, that, you know, before it was, if you allow it, you're opening the door for everything. But now you can, uh, based on what other communities are doing, and that I've seen is you can, you can limit to, to the specific uses that you so desire.
Right.
So when we vote on this, it should be a specific vote that we're opting in for um processing only, or we're opting in for um testing only? Is that correct?
But again, my recommendation would be that uh this is gonna take, this is gonna take a lot more work than, than can be accomplished uh at the next regular city council meeting at this target, in terms of developing language, uh, what are the appropriate, we're need, uh, I know Jill's on the, on the line here as well, or on this meeting as well. Um, you know, appropriate zoning regulations, how many are right for Lathrow? There's a, uh, and maybe a lot of stuff has already been done by the subcommittee meeting, just I haven't seen it yet, but I do think it's gonna take time, well beyond the September sunset, uh, to adequately prepare an ordinance. So uh my recommendation, if, if the direction that council would like to go is to, is to opt in and allow for some type of marijuana related industry in the city, then uh direct the city staff, city consultants, uh, in conjunction with the subcommittee um to, to begin developing tho- that, those ordinances and those regulations, uh, and, and tailoring that research. Maybe that's when the subcommittee goes back and conducts their additional survey, or gets more feedback from the public that they discussed doing. So I'm, I'm, my recommendation is gonna be to extend the, the opting out uh for now, at least for maybe an additional period of time, uh, if, if council wants to, to, but that would be our recommendation, if council wanted to allow for marijuana-related establishments.
So I have to agree with you uh on that one, because that's where my brain was going, because um honestly, and I know this, you know, might not be popular, but I do feel rushed at this point to know that in two weeks, it, you know, to, to vote on it. And I don't feel as though, I mean, I see, and, and Ian said that you weren't finished with the presentation, so I apologize if we um jumped in there too soon. But um my, you know, it, my thoughts were, we would have a recommendation of opting in, but specifically opting in for what? Because in my brain, I'm thinking if we um vote on that to opt in, again, that's opening up for everything, because we had nothing really in place, unless, you know, that was coming on the twenty-seventh, which.
Oh, yeah. So I put up here, I put up here our, our, my, my attempt at this recommendation right now, and obviously we can revise it, but, you know, it says marijuana side group hereby recommends, and city, city recommends that the city council allow marijuana-related businesses to operate in the city, and recommends that licenses be considered for the following types of businesses. So this is not saying we want all these businesses. This is saying, hey, we recommend, we allow marijuana businesses in the city, these are the different types. The council, we can figure out which ones we want or don't want. This is an answer to basically, hey, we, our sunset period is running out, we allow marijuana or not. It's just saying, yeah, we should. These are the different businesses, but we, but it's not saying we're gonna pick all of them. It's not saying one or two. It's saying we're gonna decide which ones we want, ultimately.
Right.
All I'm saying is, we're gonna allow marijuana business. So that's, that was the recommendation, was four in favor, one was absent. Um, that's kinda where, that's what our, that's what my mindset was, is that, that we have to decide if we're gonna allow marijuana businesses or not. That's the general, not that we're gonna have recreational.
Right.
Dispensaries, medical dispensaries, a test lab, you know, we, if we wanna go that route, we could do that, but that's not what we've done yet. And I don't think that's what we need to do. I think we just need to decide, do we want marijuana or not? And then we figure out which ones we want.
And then this, the, for the expansion for that, uh, let me just expand, sorry about Donna, Donna.
No.
So let me, let me just expand on Saleem's thoughts. So, and this is the process by which most of the cities went through. So they made a decision whether or not they wanted the marijuana business. It wasn't necessarily a specific business. So they went to council, and the council agreed. Then that process went back to the committee to determine which type of business, right? And then at that point, once that's established, you then start to work towards, you know, accepting applications. You come back to council, you say, okay, this committee is recommending this. And then at that point, we start the process of trying to get some ordinances in place, understanding what other cities are doing. So all of this that you see before you, we're not reinventing anything. We are piggybacking on everything that has worked for these other cities. They, they have even said, please take our ordinances that have worked, and anything that hasn't worked, throw it out. And that's what we have done.
So let me ask you this question real quick.
The wheel here.
Um, so by these cities, they've opted in without an ordinance in place, and it worked for them.
They opted in, but then the next step was to actually start creating the ordinances.
Yeah, that, they put them in place after opting in.
Exactly.
Put them in place, they developed them, they, it worked through that whole process. I don't think you, I mean.
You don't do the, it's not the cart before the horse. Yeah, yeah.
I mean, does that make sense, Scott? I mean, I think that's kinda how you have to do it, right?
No, I mean, you, I would recommend that you have your ordinances in place and, and have a framework for what your approval process will be prior to opening up and taking applications.
Yeah, so this is why, and the reason I was bringing that up, because I challenge you to, to um follow Pontiac, because that's what happened to Pontiac, if I'm not mistaken, is that.
We've heard that Pontiac's not the one to follow.
Yeah, Pontiac is not the city to follow. They're.
No, 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 I'm not saying to follow them by far. That's not what I'm saying, is the fact is that they opted in and did not have an ordinance in place. And Scott, correct me if I, if I'm not right. And now it is, it's a, it's a huge mess.
You're right. You can opt in, I know, Scott, you just said, don't opt in and start accepting applications before you have an ordinance. Yes, I re-agree with that. You can opt in, and you don't, you're not accepting applications right away, are you?
No, you're not.
You have to set up a process. Once you're saying that it's a legal business in the city, it's a legal business in the city.
Right.
So if someone applies and wants to open up a business without any sort of framework or guidelines, what basis are you gonna tell them that they can't?
How can they apply? How can they have an application, right?
How can, yeah, I, I would agree with Saleem. Let's answer Saleem's question.
How, how would they apply? You, you'd have to develop an application process, right, for them to apply?
Exactly, but by you opting in and saying it's a legal business, it, it's just like if someone wants to open a hair salon in the city, they're not, they're not applying for anything. They're, they're opening up it, because it's a legal business.
They can just open it up.
So if you wanna put regulations where, where these businesses wanna be, a number, uh, an application process, an application, that's all gonna take, you, you have to have that framework in place before. Now you can, the council can say, it's our intent, we, we will be opening, and we will be allowing for marijuana establishments, but not right now, not until we come up with, with our ordinances and our framework. And, and what I said earlier is that I do believe that the ordinances that are in place now, you're going to see modifications based on that Byron Township case that just came out the last month. Um, that, that's going, that's going to shape and change those, because you're now, now you're able to, where you previously weren't able to, to apply regulation to, to certain, to the caregiver portion of the marijuana business, or the medical marijuana business. And now you're able to do that, uh, and that's gonna help the issues like Bruce is having with the odor and the neighborhoods. So that, that's all gonna have to be compiled into, into one, my recommendation would be compiling into one ordinance, not have separate ordinance for marijuana, separate ordinance for recreational, I think, having one comprehensive. And that's where I, what I said is, it's going to take time to do that. This is not something you wanna rush to. There's no race, uh, it's not a, you don't opt into marijuana because you wanna make money or perceive that it's gonna be a revenue generator. Uh, I think that's been proven over, that that's a red herring. It's, it's not something that uh over long term is gonna be continued, is gonna continue to generate a significant amount of revenue.
Okay.
Bruce has a question.
Well, I've.
As well as Jill, as well as, and I would like to add a comment as well.
Yeah, I've been trying to get in.
Go ahead.
I've, I've been trying to get in the conversation literally for a half an hour, and every time I open my mouth, somebody else beats me to it. So I've got a lot of comments to make. Um, first of all, uh, just high level, I think what we need to do, and, and I think, Scott, you were alluding to this, um, it sounds like the committee is, is recommending that we opt in, but doesn't have all, all the details yet. So what, what I'm gonna suggest first off is, um, you know, that we extend the sunset, um, you know, for three months or what, what have you. Um, we have discussions, you know, the committee and, and council can have discussions, you know, and if we feel like we wanna opt in, then we can start, or even if we opt out, we still have to put a, you know, a permanent ordinance in place. So then we can start working on the ordinance either for or against, figuring out what we want, how many provisioning centers, um, you know, where, where, where they located, what are our zoning ordinances and changes that we have to make, um, all those, all those kinds of things, and, and, and do this, you know, in a, in a regimented way, so that when, you, so when it comes to council, we, you know, say yea or nay, and if we say yea, we're ready, and as Scott said, it's a, it's a legal business at that point, and we can start taking applications. Because where you get into trouble is where you make it, you know, a legal business, but you don't have a process in place. So that's, that's the, the overall arching comment that I wanna make. But I do wanna address um several other things that I've been taking no time, because I kept trying to comment at the time, um, and, and wasn't able to. So a, a, a few things about some of the things that, that were said, I mean, there was some talk, and these are gonna be random, because I, like I said, I couldn't get in. But um as far as the, the odor goes, um, you know, we were talking about odor, we have a, we have zoning in place for the businesses, so businesses can't um emit odors. So that's, that, 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 that's not an issue. And as far as the odor in the neighborhoods go, that's gonna be agnostic to whether or not we sell it here. Um, you know, people are gonna get it, they're gonna smoke it on their property, and we're gonna smell it. So that, that, I don't think the odor, you know, i- is, is really a pertinent issue to, you know, whether or not we, we approve, because I don't think it's gonna have any effect on it. That's, that's my opinion. Um, as far as parking and traffic goes, you know, that, again, that's something that, that is addressed during site plans in the planning commission. Um, so obviously, we're not going to put a place in that's, that's not gonna meet our, our, our zoning standards for parking, for example. Um, so, and we may have to change our zoning, you know, based upon, you know, this particular type of business, because if it is a, a, a very high-traffic business, then. then we might need to make some changes to our zoning before we actually go live with this, if that's something that we want to do. And then the other thing, you know, there was a little bit of talk right at the beginning about, you know, where is it going to be located? You know, a, a, again, I, I personally, and I haven't made up my mind one way or the other, because I'm still researching this myself, but, you know, in terms of where we locate, it's no different. We sell cigarettes, we sell liquor in Lathrop, you know, on the build, you know, in buildings that are right next to homes. So I, I don't personally.
So Bruce, that's not, I mean, if you're talking, if you're basing it off of what I was saying, that's not my point. It was not about where is it going to be located? Because, I mean, that, that's way putting the cart before the horse. That's not my point. My point was, those particular cities that were researched have locations within their cities that's away from residents. That, that's what I meant. And so, for an example, for Walt Lake, and I know this to be true, because I have relatives that live there, you can go into town and there's not a resident, it's not residential, like where the restaurants are. It is where you can, you know, put something there and it's not near a resident. So that's what I meant in location, not as where is the actual building going to go.
Yeah, point taken, point taken. So those, those are some of the things that I've been saving up. But, but yeah, I, you know, you know, just as, as a, a point of operation, I mean, what I would suggest is that on the twenty-seventh, we have a, a motion to extend our ordinance that opts us out, you know, with a sunset date of, you know, maybe three months, so that we can work through this process. Because it sounds like the committee, and that sounds like the committee did say that they are recommending this. So if they're recommending this, then what we need to do then is, as council, is work with the committee who has all the knowledge to figure out, you know, if we do put this forward, how many, where, what's the zoning, you know, what, do we have to change our zoning regulations and so forth? So that, that would be my suggestion.
I think Donna had, I mean, Cheryl had something next, and then I, I believe it was Jill. Jill, Donna, and, excuse me, the three of them had something to say also. They might have been trying forty-five minutes to jump in now, Bruce.
And it's been so long.
But it was.
But the one thing I, one comment I want to make is that in terms of the societal impact, I think we all understand, especially with youth and the exposure, that that's something that you don't want to occur. But the other element of that is that it exists. It's already here. People can consume and grow in their homes. So in terms of exposure, it already exists. In, in regards to what council may want to do, as Bruce was saying, as well as Scott, is the action step most likely that you want to look at is extending the, the opt-out ordinance for some reasonable period of time. And I would suggest that it should be at least until the end of the year, if not longer, because I don't anticipate this going to move that quickly. As the individuals and boards try to make a determination on what the zoning, the site plan process, application process, all of those due diligence efforts are going to take in order to move this along. And council has the ability, any step along the way, to determine that this is not what we want to do, and say that the opting out is permanent, or you can say, yes, based on the information we now have available, this is how we want to proceed, and we want it to look as such. So that would be my suggestion to you, and I think Jill also has some commentary.
Thank you. Just listening in on all of the conversation, I did watch the last meeting of the study group, and so that was helpful to get some of the background. But I completely agree with everything City Attorney has mentioned in terms of application process and ordinance. I, I would also remind you that as the Planning Commission develops zoning ordinance language, there are public hearing requirements as well. So even moving as quickly as possible, I think we're at least looking at six months. And, you know, we can certainly look to other ordinances as models, but those will need to be tweaked and calibrated to your community. You have a very unique community in terms of its size and its, its building form along Southfield Road. And I think Bruce, your point about places that sell alcohol and cigarettes is a good one, although I would remind you that you regulate those pretty tightly as well, and really in a similar fashion. So, you know, I think you've got precedent for doing that, but would just, you know, offer that up as, as commentary. But we're happy to work with you all to develop an ordinance that meets the city's needs.
Thank you, Jill. Um, Donna, did you have something that you were trying to say?
Yes, a long time ago, but I think it's kind of been covered. And I definitely agree with what the attorney has said about, and, and Dr. Cheryl about keeping the, the opting out. But I had a question. What is the chief, what is our chief, what are his views on this? Our chief of police?
So we, so we met with the chief, so Chief McKee's views, if I can speak for him, I don't know if he's on, but, you know, he has, you know, definitely has concerns. He's, I would say he's not in favor of, of the recommendation. He wouldn't be in favor of it. He's concerned about, you know, additional costs related to policing. He thinks we're in a location where it is, we're unique in that we are close to freeways, six ninety-six, it's right here, people can get, jump on and off, you know, commit a crime and leave quickly. He's worried about that. He's worried, he does think, you know, his opinion, and he was, he said he doesn't have facts to back it up, but he thinks that increased availability could lead to additional, you know, impaired driving, although he did admit that there's no real support or no facts, data to back that up at this point. But those are kind of his thoughts. You know, he wasn't in favor of it, but he listened to us, and he was very cordial. We had a good discussion, and I think he'd support whatever the city wants to do. Ian was in on the call too. I don't know, Ian, do you have any other thoughts on?
Yeah, just like the, yeah, just like the chiefs in Hazel Park and Walt Lake, Chief McKee had an issue with, with traffic. He said, where would it actually go? And that's the same issue that all the other chiefs had. In addition, he, and Saleem just mentioned it. So, you know, we have two interstates, and, you know, it could be a concern where someone can jump on and off on the interstate, depending on where, you know, a test, well, test lab, trucking company, the business in general. So we're talking about the four sections, four aspects of the business, if that's a concern. So his, his specific concern were provisioning centers, which is what we talked, we really talked about all aspects of the business. But the response is coming from, okay, we've got issues with, we don't have an issue with provisioning centers, but because Lathrop is a certain size, then it could be an issue because someone can jump on and off the freeway. But again, like I said, we're, we're talking about four different aspects of the business. I also wanted to point out a couple of things here. So only grow and transport licensing are normally in industrial zones. Everything else is retail. So I need you guys to keep that in mind. The other aspect of it is, and I think Saleem would agree with me, our task was to go back to the committee, do the research, figure out if this was a viable solution for the city as far as a new business, present it to council, and then council ultimately would have to make a decision. Now Scott made a statement that we needed ordinances in place first, but we never discussed that, because if we would have, we would not have done the committee first. We would have worked on the ordinances first, before the horse.
Yeah, or we would have, sorry to interrupt you. And I was going to say something similar. I mean, our goal was not to make a recommendation and then start taking applications and opening up right away. That's the start goal. Our goal is to figure out, okay, is, should we allow marijuana businesses in the city? We recommend yes. So now, if that means waiting a few months while we work up ordinance, extending the sunset date and all that, that's fine. I mean, I'm all for that. I would, and I would agree with Jill to make it six months, because you got to do it right.
Exactly.
Got to like, you know, get these ordinances in place, you got to do the research.
I don't think that the, that the committee per se was tasked with putting an ordinance together.
No, no, I didn't say that.
Yeah, but that's part of the process. But that's, that's the process for us to get going, right? And so I think our committee's goal and what we've done is say, yes, we recommend having marijuana businesses in the city. Now, if we present it to council, and the council says, okay, that's good, let's extend the sunset and work on ordinances and stuff, and really do our research, I think that's the way to go.
I would agree that's appropriate.
Yeah, I haven't disagreed with anything. And Jill is absolutely right. I mean, I'm not asking anybody on the council to take any other city's ordinance and rubber stamp it. I mean, it has to be unique for Lathrop, and they've said that. They said, hey, listen, don't reinvent the wheel. Look at our ordinance, whatever fits for your city, and if you see something that we've never covered, you got to cover it.
I think, I mean, we, I, I believe that we understand, and I appreciate that, because I know we did that before. I mean, Scott brought examples before to council, so we could kind of look at them. What I was saying about the ordinances is that I, I have been following certain cities that have opted in, and what makes me nervous is, because it is a debacle in Pontiac, and regarding they, I don't think it was opted in, I think they voted it in, if I'm not mistaken, but the fact is that there was nothing in place. And so now, well, I'm, might be exaggerating, but, you know, to have twenty distribution places or something like that in a small town. So it's just about.
They're actually still working on there, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but they are, we're working with the city of Pontiac, but they are working on going through all of their applications. And they do have a pretty rigorous set of standards for evaluating and comparing the different applications, and they are limiting the number, it's still a lot, it's a big city, the number of, of different types of facilities per region of the city.
Thank you for that information. My question is, that's after the fact of them opting in, though, right?
Um, I am not, I don't think they've allowed, they have medical, they have the medical marijuana dispensaries, and that's a separate, that was a separate legislation and separate from the, from the other kind.
Got you. I'm just, you know, my whole point is, is that I think I'm with Bruce, you know, I don't have a horse in the race, number one, but I sure don't, if I had to vote the twenty-seventh, I, I would not, I, I couldn't even tell you where I would vote at this point, if I was shot, and I'm just joking, just totally joking, I know that's, uh, this is being recorded, so don't take me serious on that one. But the fact is, I just personally think if we, if you're going to vote on something as important as this, and to me, this is very important, I think that we do need to take more time and, you know, dot our i's, cross our t's, just be more, have more information about. I love the idea of extending our sunset or the, the time period, and as long as, and I think this is a good idea, that if we say we did extend it for six months, as long as we have this opportunity to truly work to see what works for Lathrop, that we can go back and say, you know what, we're not going to go to the end of the sunset. We, we're going to make a decision, you know, in a couple of months or something like that. And you said we could do that, right?
Yeah, as soon, as soon as you're ready to, if you, you know, once everything is in place, council's comfortable with it, you don't have to wait till it expires. You can amend the ordinance and enact the new ordinances. And that, and that's why I would suggest making it six months, make it a year. Give yourself ample time to do that. You don't, you're not bound by that entire duration of time, but things do have a, have a way of going by quickly, just like this eighteen months went by pretty fast, so.
Right, exactly.
And I do, I do like the year, I do like the year. And, and I'd like to just hear more, and I know you guys have had a great conversation with the chief, but I would like to, was that, was that a part of your cons as well? The, the chief's?
Yeah, I think it's in the summary, and it'll be part of our, it'll be part of our overall presentation.
Because that traffic thing is important. I can remember before I was a councilperson, where we voted against a coffee shop because of traffic, and, and that's, that's really huge. So I would like to hear, just have a little more time. And I would vote for the year so that we can take our time, break down which, if any, what we would like to do and work around whatever area we decide, if any, that we want to go in and be more specific, so.
Well, let me ask, so how does that work procedurally? I mean, so we're not, so I didn't, you know, I wasn't aware that we had to have these ordinances in place if we vote to opt in, obviously. So now that Scott's mentioned that, so that makes sense. We don't want to do that. We don't want to opt in and not have anything in place. But if we extend the sunset, what do we do? Do we say, yeah, we're going to investigate, we're going to put together ordinances, contemplating that we're going to allow marijuana facilities? Like, how is that going to work? What do we do?
That's, that's where the direction of council comes next, or in two weeks. If, if the majority of council says, okay, we're comfortable moving this forward, the understanding is we would allow time on the opt-out ordinance, extending that for the development of ordinances and the continued research as to the types and numbers of facilities that the city will allow.
So should the committee make this recommendation that we've put up so far? Or should we make a recommendation to extend the sunset period? And, and by doing that, use that time to develop ordinances and the rules and policies around allowing marijuana? Do we want us to put together that recommendation?
Well, I think step, step one is, step one is to make the recommendation that the committee has come to, and that's to, in favor of marijuana establishments, and then let council determine, okay, yes or no, we, we are in favor of marijuana businesses. And if the answer to that is yes, then the next step from council will be, okay, now that we're, we're on board with the concept of opting in, now we want you to do more, more research, and we want you to come back with us with proposed ordinance, proposed types of facilities, and proposed number of facilities. We're going to extend the opt-out period to give you ample time to do that. As soon as you have that information, bring that back to us, Planning Commission, do your public hearings, do your homework, work on the zoning ordinance amendments that are required, and then send that as, as everyone's marching orders.
I, I would propose a, a variant to that, Scott. I, I would say, you know, Saleem, you guys make, obviously made your, your recommendation. I think, very similar to what you were saying, Scott, I, I think, you know, we should decide on council whether or not there, there's an appetite to move forward, you know, straw vote kind of thing. If we do, then I think, you know, we've got, you know, the, the content experts, you know, who, who drove the committee, you know, Saleem and Ian are on council. So I think council should work together with, with Jill and you and whomever to put together, you know, the ordinance, you know, and any, any other, you know, zoning and things like that that we, we need to do. If we need additional resources, then, then Saleem and Ian can go back to the, the committee to, to do, you know, further research if we need it. But I think we've got the content experts. I, I think this is something, again, assuming that we do a straw poll and, and there, there's support, you know, to move forward, I think, I think it should be held within council for us to begin to put together ordinances and, and so forth, and, and try to, try to get this, this done, if it's something that we want to do.
Hold on. I'm a little confused, because I thought this conversation started because we thought we needed a little more detail before we said we wanted to move forward. And it sounds like we're back at, it sounds like we're back at the table where, without the more details, the other reports that we want to say a yes or no. So really, what you're saying is, without implementing it, we're still looking for, you know, a vote, but it's, it's not a vote vote, it's, but it's still a vote. And I would still like to go back to us getting just some more details on comparing cities that have had the operations a little longer, considering our chiefs, and, and I would just like more detail, because what you're saying is that we're actually going to vote on it, but it won't be a formal vote. And this all started because we said we will need it, a little, we needed some more detail. So I'm personally not ready to say, let's move forward without the detail.
Yeah, I wasn't saying we, we move forward, I'm saying we just, i- if, if it seems like there's, there's enough interest, maybe I should have said interest, a straw poll to determine interest. If there's interest, then, you know, we can start moving. If there's interest, then, you know, we can start moving forward. And if we come up with concerns along the way, uh, again, that's what I was saying, you know, Saleem can, can, you know, and Ian, if they can't address, you know, whatever the concerns are, like, you know, the, the, you know, you want, I know you, earlier you mentioned like crime in Colorado. You know, then they can go back to the committee and have them do that research and get it back to us. We can use them as resources, but um, you know, I mean, it's, like I said, it sounds like they're making a recommendation that it would be good for the city. Um, you know, sunset it, so we've got, we've got time to, to vet this thoroughly. Um, but, you know, i- i- if there seems to be en- enough interest to move forward, then, then move forward. And, you know, it's, again, it's not a final vote until, until, you know, we have a ordinance on the table, which we don't have now, so.
Right. And any additional information-
Yeah, but I think you're saying the same thing that, that you said. I think that's the same, the same point. And I, I'm not gonna repeat it again, but again, I was just hoping that we could, that we could get more information, discuss this further during our next meeting and think about whether or not we want to go forward. It's, it's to no disrespect for the, 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 those that have worked hard to get the information. Um, I agree that they have worked hard, but I'm just saying, just like, I'm just saying, I would like to see more information before we even nod our heads.
Any additional information, any additional information that's needed from the committee? Please send Saleem and I an email with details. From, and that's extended to all council. If you feel that uh, we've missed something, then by all means, be specific in the email.
So I don't think that we need to really necessarily send another uh, individual emails. It's one, let's sunset it, um, determine what the sunset's gonna be by the next meeting. Um, number two, it is, we kind of discussed it where it was the um, talking to cities that have been in the business more than medical, just medical marijuana, but also recreational, to find out crimes, more or less, what I'm hearing is crime statistics and traffic. Uh, I guess it's to take a deeper dive of what you already have, but with cities that have been um, either in, well, have been in the business longer than a year, so that means going outside of Michigan. And then the other one was cities of our size and kind of uh, um, if you, if you can find it, cause I might be just, you know, doing stab in the dark, but structurally like ours. Um, and I think that also it is where there is an interest. For me, I'm assuming the whole reason why we put this committee together, that there is an interest among the majority um, of the council. But before anyone will make a move to say yea or nay, it's just, you know, the more information is needed. So, I think that personally, that we should be moving forward to get more information and do our due diligence so we can make intellectual, uh, you know, make a responsible, not intellectual, a responsible uh, decision.
I agree with that.
So, um-
Sounds like you don't wanna vote on the twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh.
Whatever that data is.
Right.
Vote on the twenty, on the twenty-seventh is, is extending the sunset.
Yeah.
And that's to move forward.
I was just, I mean, personally, I was just uncomfortable with voting for it on the twenty-seventh. I just didn't feel like I had enough knowledge about it. And, and some of it could be possibly, I just personally need to do more um, um, and more, get more information for myself. But nonetheless, um, on the twenty-seventh, the vote would be for, to extend the um, the sunset and to determine, you know, the, the timeline of how long we're gonna extend it for.
Okay, I do welcome that everybody read, everybody in the committee read the uh, presentation that Saleem will forward. Because it's, we, we did kind of get a hiccup. We were trying to get through, so please try to read everything.
Yeah, and I'll forward this, and this isn't the entire present. I'll forward it to everyone, so you can have it. And uh, so it's more, a little more detailed than this and it's got all the stuff we did, so. But I, I'm fine with that. I agree with that. I mean, we can vote to uh, sunset, extend the sunset. And then as we get more information, we can decide when it's, and when and if we're ready to move forward, putting together ordinances and things like that, right? And that'll be, that'll happen once we decide that, yeah, we wanna go forward with it.
Yeah, I agree with that also.
Very good, I agree with it.
As a clarification, are you asking for something to be drafted for next, your next regular meeting that actually extends the sunset? Or are you, are you wanting to discuss how long that sunset's going to be at your next meeting?
I think we should draft something to, to vote on. We need to figure out what the duration is, which we can either do now or, you know, at the next study session, but.
That's what I was getting at. So do you want three, six, or twelve months?
I personally, I think twelve months is too long. I, I, I would like, as, as long as, as long as we can, and I guess this is a question for Jill and Scott. Um, do you think it's realistic, you know, with, with the, um, you know, a- again, assuming if, if we were to go forward with this? Um, is it realistic to say six, six months with, with all the, you know, uh, ordinances and, and public readings and so forth? Or do you think uh, it needs to be slightly longer than that?
Well, this, this is the really, what I'm, based on what I'm hearing now is that uh, council is not prepared to make a decision if they wanted to even opt in and they want more research before they get to step one. I think it's gonna be harder for us to prepare an ordinance. And I also think it's pretty wasteful for the city's resources, um, to spend the money developing ordinances and zoning amendments if ultimately council decides they don't wanna move forward with it. So I do think we, council kind of needs to, to take that step. Um, if, if they're not comfortable doing it in two weeks, then um, how, how long is it gonna take? How much more research and time is gonna be needed? Because that should be factored in, into how long we extend the sunset. I, again, I think it's easier to go longer and then shorten it if, when it's ready versus then going back and now we're up against a deadline again, oh, we have to extend it, uh, you know, a third time.
So what's your recommend, sorry, so what's your recommendation? Should it be, you know, six months? I mean.
I think in the next two weeks, council should, should do as much research as they possibly can and, and be prepared to give more direction as to either opting in or opting out on the twenty-seventh. And if, if the decision is to opt in, uh, I think it, it'll be close, but I think six months um, is probably doable. If, if council's gonna need more time, more feedback, more input from either the subcommittee or, or other resources, then I would say twelve months would be the safer route.
And I would agree with that. I think um, to Scott's point, um, the best ordinances are created when you have a clear direction provided. So you as council need to give the Planning Commission um, the clearest of direction on what you want to see. Um, if, what kinds of facilities you would like to permit. Um, the kinds of uh, impacts that you might be concerned about, like traffic, parking, um, so that we know where to focus our energies in terms of mitigating those impacts. Um, I, I would say that the deadline is very self-imposed. And while it's good to have it, um, to show the community that you're making strides on this uh, topic, um, you can continue opting out. You don't have to settle a deadline. So I agree with Scott, I would set the year and um, if we can be done sooner, we'll be done sooner.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with Scott. And in addition to, based on what Mary Garrett said as far as questions that she had, um, it's easy, it's pretty easy to get the information. If uh, Councilwoman Stallings has any additional information, we can get that. But for the most part, I, I would ask the council to take the time to read the information that Saleem had gathered based on the committee. And if there are any gaps or concerns, then we start there. But I don't think that twelve months is, is realistic. I don't think nine months is realistic. And I would agree with, with uh, with Scott. I would agree with him.
So what's the issue if we held out? Um, you, you would agree that uh, that we would have, that, well, I, I hear the twelve months can really be two months and it could really be eight months and it can really be twelve months. So I don't know if that's an issue at all. But I think that the real issue, I think that the pertinent uh, part of what we're doing is right now. So making sure that we, we springboard off of a, a platform where we all have information. And I don't know what holding off a month uh, to, to discuss it further, to get more information. I don't know why that's so detrimental or whatever, cause I'm still there, still there. Still um, not ready to make a decision. I, I think that's what was proposed. Again, we came back to that again on the twenty-seventh, so.
Again, I, I, you know, I take Scott's recommendation. Um, if, if there are any gaps in the data, we can address it. And I think we've been more than forthright with the information. I would just ask that council read the information and, and let's go there.
And, but I could take the chief's information, you know. I, I'm saying, let's just try to reason together. I mean, um, I could, let's try to reason together. Let's just take a couple of more weeks and try to-
Okay, I don't know um, what happened uh, to Donna, but we can't hear you anymore. And so, I'm lost. I think we beat this one too, to a vote, because I-
You're from the death, man.
I mean, my thing is this, and I'm, I'm being straightforward, is I'm assuming we wanted to opt in. The, I'm assuming that we, that's what we were leaning towards, hence the reason why we put the committee together, to get the information. Because I don't see the, the pros and cons in the um, um, what was sent. You know, I'd see what the pros are about doing it, just a little bit more information for it. So, and I agree that I don't wanna waste um, the city's resources with doing the ordinance to say, all of a sudden, you know, we don't wanna do it. So on the twenty-seventh, the expectations are what for us? Just to be clear, Scott.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna address the elephant in the room here for a second. So, obviously, Saleem and, and Ian are, are, cause they're on the committee and they both vote, you know, they both voted to include it.
I, I didn't vote as the advisor, so I wasn't a part of the committee.
Right, but I'm, I'm guessing based on your, your comments tonight, where, where you stand. Um, I've been researching this on my own. I've been looking forward to seeing the research that, that, that you guys have come up with. And I would look forward to reading what, what Saleem is, is going to send. Um, I have not made up my dis, my, my mind, but I, I'll tell you that I'm, that I am leaning for it. Um, and so I, I guess, you know, I, I, like I said, I do wanna read what Saleem does and I, and I'm probably about three quarters of, of the way through my own independent research. Um, but if, if, I mean, the reason why I said the elephant in the room is so, so potentially, you know, you're talking three or five people at this point, you know, without even knowing what, what Kelly and, and Donna's opinions are, you know, one way or the other. Um, no, I'm, I'm saying that you, you guys, you guys haven't, I mean, you know, I'm just saying that there's, there's two that sound like they're definitely for it. Um, I'm get, I personally am getting there, I'm not there yet. Um, but um, you know, so i- i- if, if we get their research and, and again, the elephant in the room is, is if I, if I'm ready on, in two weeks to say, you know, I, I think I'm for this, and again, I'm not there yet. Um, but then, at that point then, I, which is why I was kind of talking about a straw poll a little bit earlier, you know, then, then we are, you know, ready to start working on, on, on ordinances, um, and, and that kind of thing. So, um, you know, so I guess factor that into what our next steps are.
Right. And, and for the record-
So it's kind of like what I just heard, and I, I'm gonna try to paraphrase this, is that it doesn't really, because there's more majority leaning towards it? Is that what you're saying? Or am I going down the right road and that, go ahead?
Uh, kind of, I mean, I'm, I'm saying, you know, a- a- again, we, we're a long way away from a final vote. Um, and, and, you know, but, you know, from a, from a straw poll perspective, I think we're pretty close to saying that, you know, as, as a group of five, th- th- that there may be a majority towards, you know, developing or-
And that we shouldn't give, we shouldn't want more information even if we're undecided?
No, absolutely not. You should want more, I want more information. I wanna see what Saleem has, I wanna continue my research. But from everything that I've personally seen up to this point, I'm leaning in the positive direction, not the negative direction. Um, so, you know, and, and I think, I, personally, after reading what Saleem and uh, you know, and his committee have put out along with the, you know, another two weeks of, of, of my own research, you know, I, I personally will be ready to make a decision, I think, on the twenty-seventh. That's me personally. Um, so, I'm, I'm just saying, I'm just throwing that out there.
Well, un- unfortunately, Bruce, I haven't um, made any statements regarding for or against. We just gathered the data and wherever the data took us, that's where we are. I have not said I am for or against.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's-
Right, and I'm just trying to maintain the integrity of what we completed, right? So Saleem and the committee did a heck of a job getting everything together. So our goal is to kind of round that up, have everyone look at it. And then at some point, which is in two weeks, um, and I think the data will speak for itself. We have more than enough information and if something's missing, we can go get it. So, yeah.
Which, which is why I was suggesting, you know, an extension with, you know, some sort of straw poll, you know, in, in two weeks. Because, you know, it doesn't, you know, like, like Scott said, like Kelly said, it doesn't make sense to put all this resources, you, you know, in play if we don't think we have, you know, a majority or enough majority interest to, to do it. Um, so, you know, extend the, extend the sunset, cause we need to do that one way or the other, so that we do have time to, to, to research it. But then let's, you know, do a straw poll in two weeks or four weeks, whatever, um, you know, to see whether or not we're moving forward.
You know what, I, I'm not, I'm not opposed to giving more ti, I mean, we don't necessarily have to, do we have to do this in two weeks? We don't have to do it in two weeks. We could do it the next month if we want, right? So I'm, if, 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 if other people wanna have more time to look at the research, um, also, you hear that feedback? Um, have time to, you know, look at research, do their own research. I mean, I'm not opposed to waiting another month. I don't, I mean, it doesn't matter, we, it was still before the sunset period, right? It doesn't make any difference, does it?
Regardless, I think it makes sense to, you know, on, on the twenty-seventh, to increase the sunset. I mean, I don't, you know, let's get that out of the way. Cause we have to do that one way or the other.
I mean, realistically speaking, you know, I'd say if you go worst case, it could at least be sixty days if you wanted to do that, if you needed more time. But I would agree with Saleem. I mean, you know, we don't necessarily have to do it on the twenty-seventh. I mean, I think-
So indulge me for a second. Isn't that what we were saying in the first place? I don't know how we just came back to this, but isn't that what we were saying for the twenty-seventh, just to do the sunset? I mean, and then get some more information? So I'm not sure how it just went in a circle.
Yeah, kind of in a circle.
Yeah, it did, so, I mean, and that just went weird.
Don't want for explanations.
Well, I think, I think what, what happened is I started it by saying that I would prefer to have a decision so, so I would know how long to extend it for recommendation.
Yeah, Scott, what are you, what are you doing?
Yeah, he said that and then Jill said, hey, you know, we're right there. So I was like, okay.
I mean, it's fine, I, we can send out, I'll send out the data. Everyone can look at it, take their time. That should give enough time for everyone to come to some kind of position on it, right? Like, if we vote on it sometime in August. And then we can, everyone can be comfortable with their thinking on it.
Right.
How's that it for an idea, Kelly?
I thought we did that an hour ago, but you know.
I did too, and Donna, yes, thank you though.
I have, I have a procedural question in regards to that. Uh, and I guess, Scott, if you could help. If the current um, sunset resolution expires the end of September, if they wish to extend it, do they, can they do that with immediate effect? Or is that something that's going to require two meetings in order for that to go into effect?
It's gonna, it could require two meetings, cause it'll be amendment to that ordinance. So whereas the original sunset was eighteen months from enactment, um, the amendment, and we can give a date specific as to when this one will be. If we say, you know, September, whatever, however many months council wants it, we can, we can put that date specific in it.
So to avoid the September one from lapsing and essentially not having something in effect, they really do need to take- So to avoid the September one from lapsing and essentially not having something in effect, they really do need to take some action to extend at the July meeting.
Correct.
Okay.
Right, and that's why I was suggesting it, that we do, we make sure we do it in July.
Cheryl, just one question, because I think we have more than just council on on the line. I think this because of the study session, are we opening this up for any discussion or?
That's up to the mayor and the council members.
Okay.
I mean, it's already been, it's already been open that, you know, if anyone has any questions, they can raise their hands. So it's not where we were, um, not allowing people to speak. So it's totally up to them if they want to speak.
Right, well, we 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 still have other agenda items, don't we, before we get to public comment?
I I'm trying to, I'm trying to move us along, but, you know, I'm trying. The next meeting, we have to have a decision of whether or not we're going to send the sunset. Just know that. And if you send out the information, then we can, you know, we'll enter, you know, we'll, I mean, I enter, we will read what information that you all send us. And then we'll come to the determination on the twenty seventh. Just know that that's coming.
Yep.
Okay? So.
Sounds good.
My guy. Um, so the next, the next, um, agenda item, and I, Cheryl, I would have lost what I said when we first came on, it's nine o'clock. So Evergreen Farmington Sewer Disposal District Service Agreement Study.
Okay, and just in case we get shut off, because I set the Zoom meeting up for three hours, and I don't know what it does if you go past your deadline.
Oh.
And if it does shut off, I'm I'm not coming back. But in regards to.
But we'll just call you and do a conference call so we can be finished, so go ahead.
Okay. So we're in the Evergreen Farmington District. And they are looking at ways to address their ACO, the 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 court order in regards to overflows. And as a member of that district, one of the things they're looking at is increasing the capacity. And Lathrop has the sanitary retention tank. So one of the things they'd like to do is partner with us in finding out how they can improve the efficiency and use of that facility as part of the the district's, um, capacity. So they're going to engage in a study to find out what enhancements would be needed and what modifications would be required in order to make, to accomplish that. So we've given, I've given the administrative approval for them to do the study since there is no cost to us for them. The district is assuming those costs. They'll come back with their recommendations. I'm anticipating that there'll be some cost sharing, but I'm hopeful that a significant amount of that will be borne by the district itself because we're helping them as much as they're helping us with those enhancements. So I was just making you a prize of that's going on.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions about that? That was pretty simple, yes?
No costs associated?
Not at the present time for the study.
Okay, thanks.
Cheryl, when you, when you say, you know, increasing the capacity, is that was the 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 flow rate of twelve that we were talking about earlier?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Um, so the next thing is the parking outside of garage. It's ordinance that we have. And the reason why this was brought up is because there's some complaints about how many cars, um, some residents have in their driveway and whether or not with the dealer plates or not. And so, um, after Jim Wright looked into it, he didn't, basically, it was the family's cars and whatever. You don't have to go into that. But what Jim Wright brought up, which is somewhere in our package at the end, and I can't see it because it's it's on my phone and all my computer stuff is messing up, so I can't see that small little. But there is, um, an ordinance on the books that says that cars or residents are not supposed to park their cars in their driveway. All cars are supposed to be in the garages. Am I saying, am I paraphrasing that right? Cheryl?
Yes.
Okay, so to me, that brought up a new issue because it's kind of like, you know, you poked the hornet's nest and now you are, you have to be concerned about the fact that you're about to be attacked by hornets, kind of, you know? Because that is an ordinance that now we, um, I should say, um, not that is known. But that's one of the ordinance that we were supposed to, what's the word I'm looking for? Help me out here.
It's an ordinance, it's an ordinance that that we're not enforcing.
Exactly.
Right, and it's no, it's.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
It's it's no different than, you know, the 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 rocks in the, you know, in the right of ways. You know, the the rocks are there, we don't, we we haven't enforced it. And so I think Jim kind of opened up the can of worms, you know, with with his email saying, well, I can, you know, you know, if this, it's the number of cars in this driveway is an issue. Well, you know, I can write him a ticket, but, you know, that's gonna, you know, open up a whole can of worms. Do we want to do that? And I think that's how this conversation got got started.
So there needs to be an adjustment or, and I don't know if this is the right thing for Scott or not, but there needs to be something for that particular ordinance. Because I can drive down my street right now and tell you that probably every single hu- house that's off of Santa Barbara is going to get a ticket because they're not parking in the garage and, you know, my house included.
I would get a ticket.
So.
Yeah, so I guess.
Go ahead.
If the question is, is do we, do you want to repeal that ordinance?
Well, yeah, that would be something I think you could have the the planning commission take a look at, uh, because that is part of the off-street parking ordinance. Um, you know, there's, there's a lot of ordinances. If you took a look at them, there's a lot of things that people could be getting tickets for. So I think it's, it's pretty hard to amend it. I mean, for example, you're you're not supposed to use your garage to work on your own car either. So, um, you know, how many people change your oil? Or, you know, you, do you really want to go down that road, uh, to removing all of that? Or or what are you going to enforce? So, but it is something I think you'd have planning commission look at. Um, frequently, they do zoning ordinance updates and health checks just to make sure the ordinance is still current and relevant. I think that's something you could have them look into.
So, yeah, I mean, that's the only reason why I brought that up is because that that was, to me, a slippery slope on that one. Um, so, um, if we can, you know, give it to the planning commission, that will be great. I got, I I thought that was going to be a longer fight, but then I'm really happy to hear that that was really easy. So, um.
The the complaint from the resident, you know, wasn't so much the number of cars there. It was that he thought that the resident was operating a business, you know, out of his house related to cars. So I I don't think he was complaining about the number of cars, so.
No, I know that, but I'm just saying that because of the residents complaining about operating a business, which happened to be about cars, but Jim opened it up and said, I can ticket him for this. That's where I'm saying, I thought it was, you know, it was a bigger issue than that. So, uh, that can be brought up at the planning commission. Um, obviously, we don't get cut off at nine o'clock as much as I was hoping that maybe it would happen, but, uh.
Jim's not, Jim's not planning to start ticketing for this thing, right?
Maybe we get, so I'm trying to go through it real fast. I think the last thing is, um, council comments, is that what's next?
Yeah, I think Salim just asked you a question.
Well, I guess my, my council comment was Jim's not going to start ticketing for these multiple cars and driveways now, right?
I would say no. As soon as he said no.
No.
He's not, he was, he was looking for direction in that email, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm going to say no too, you know, and, yeah, so, um, anybody else have any questions about that?
No.
Okay, so next is for mayor and council comments. Um, does anyone have any comments for the good of the court? Go ahead.
Okay, um, Olga's has a rat problem. Um, uh, um, oh, my gosh. Um, Ms. Green just, uh, lent me an earful regarding the issues that she's been having at her house. And, uh, she called Rose's exterminator, and I think, uh, I shared this information with Cheryl already. And I think she's in touch with Kelda regarding this issue. But apparently, Rose's, um, pest control is going to charge her five hundred bucks to, uh, eliminate this rat issue that Olga's, Olga's has created. And basically, they created it with the the rat box not being in the right location. So, um, Cheryl has already indicated that the the owner of Olga's has been contacted, so we need to try to resolve that. So I anticipate that Rose's is one of their exterminating companies that they use at Olga's. So maybe they could come up with some kind of resolution. But I'm really concerned because I live at the end of that block. So I don't want that migrating down to Lathrop Boulevard where I live. So I hope we can get some resolution.
We don't want it to go to any residence.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, but I'm selfish right now, so.
All right.
But I told Grace I would, uh, bring it up in council and let everyone know that it is five hundred bucks for her to try to remedy that issue when it could have been avoided totally. So not sure if she's asking for council to do anything here. I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you, but it's it's being worked on right now. It's in Cheryl's hand, okay.
It is, it is.
Okay. Sweet. Anyone else?
Just a quick question. I know you guys spoke spoke on this earlier, but those flags that are in the Lathrop Court apartment, are those within our ordinance? The flags that they have to advertise that they're open?
Yeah, I believe that's on their property. It's not in the right of way.
Okay.
It's not, it's not, it's not past, the the flags are not between the sidewalk and the street. They're only up near in their parking lot. I mean, anyone else? I I'm assuming that is not, it's not, they're not illegal because they're on their property.
Well, they still have to conform to the sign ordinance. I I haven't seen them, so I don't know what you.
It's the open ones and it's probably.
The big feather flag?
Yeah.
Are we talking the colorway?
Yes.
Yeah, they can, they can, that's considered temporary signage, so.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Um, anyone else?
Just going back to the, um, the car issue. So we do have a vehicle on my block that doesn't have a registered plate and is missing air in three tires. So I need to get an update on that because that is the gateway house to Lathrop Village. And it, I'm just really concerned that.
That's not the same car that you've been talking about for the last.
Yes, I need, I really need an update or a resolution on that.
I thought the last report indicated that it had ballot plates.
Yeah, I thought you, I thought Jim reported back on that one.
I don't, I don't know how that's possible, but I can, I can look at Jim's report and go look at the plate again, but. Yeah. Okay, I'll take a look at it.
Yep, and then, you know, get back with us on that one.
Okay.
Um, anything else? Um, one thing that I was going to say is that they have this, um, I'm now like Bruce, and I walk in the morning and notice everything, which is probably going to be a nightmare for everyone now. But, um, I noticed those 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 boxes that people are able to put their clothes in, the donation boxes. They, the clothes don't seem to be ever inside the box. Do you, you know?
Nor do, nor do they seem to ever get picked up, but that's.
Yeah, so I mean, there's plastic, um, bags that's all around the boxes. So.
That's usually the, um, the, the issues with the property owners. So if they're permitting the boxes to be there, they're still responsible for keeping the area clear.
Okay. Well, I noticed that, so, um, and I believe that's really all, that's my only thing that I have. I don't, no issues with bumper blocks or anything like that while I walk, so I'm good.
So I I have one last thing, it's because it just just came to mind, it's probably a Scott question. That, um, the note, the the, did everybody get that text message, that alert from the governor? It says that everybody has to wear masks outside, period. Is that even taking, taking the walks in everything?
So for the outdoor one, it was just for, I thought it was a crowd for outdoor. Let me, go ahead, I'm sorry, Scott.
No, you're, um, my understanding is that if it's a large gathering outdoors, then then a mask would be required. Um, and then any indoor, any business, uh, they're required per the governor's order.
Okay, so it says Michiganders are required by executive order to wear face coverings in public indoor and and in public indoor and crowded outdoor spaces. Okay, so whenever you're inside and if you're in a crowd outside, okay. Businesses must refuse entry or service to those who do not wear face covering. Okay, thank you.
There is an exception if you have a health condition that prohibits you from wearing a mask, uh, that they can't refuse you based upon that.
Okay, I'm done, thank you.
Can I add one more? Sorry. There is, there is a peaceful protest scheduled for the twenty second. I wanted to let Cheryl know that, and I'll try to get you some additional information if there are any requirements that need to be met. So I think it's going to be, um, scheduled around the food truck event, which is on the twenty second of July. So, um, if I need to work with Chris, I'll certainly do that.
Who would protest a food truck?
No, we're not, they're not protesting a food truck, but I just wanted to bring, bring, bring it to council's attention. Yeah, yeah.
I'm totally entertaining my household right now.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
You are welcome. And so, um, I don't know how to work this on my iPad. Do we have any questions, concerns from our audience members? Public comment? I forgot Kelda's doing it. I'll stop Kelda, put my hands down.
No hands raised.
Okay. Um, I think that we have had, um, a very fun meeting, and I would love to stay longer, but.
Well, before you go, if I could.
I almost.
I almost got away. Uh, there were, there were a number of, um, concerns expressed in regards to Tringali's pickup, especially of the recycling today. And, um, while we were on our Zoom call, I did get a chance to text with Bob Z. He indicated that the recycling truck actually caught on fire because of some of the content, um, from one of our community members. And so that caused the delay. So as you noticed, they were, um, picking up rather late today. So that was the cause of the delay. I also mentioned to him that there were several complaints in regards to some of the recycling items left on the street, even though they did pick it up. Um, so they are aware of that. And, um, there was an instance with a box, and the box had contents that were not recyclable. Um, so that's why it was put in with the trash. So I posted on Villager as well as our Facebook page to remind residents that, to make certain that they are clean recyclables in the bin um, so that we can assure that they get picked up, but also acknowledging that they have some some technical issues today with their pickup service.
So some, the someone from Lathrop caused the truck to catch on fire?
Well, they were only collecting here, so that's pretty much a fair assumption.
Wow. Oh, I thought they did the same. Oh, no, they do Mondays. No, I thought they do Oak Park too, that's why I'm asking that. I thought they did that.
Okay, let's blame Oak Park then, okay.
I'm just saying, I'm not trying to blame you, I'm just saying that they do two cities that, I mean, don't get me wrong. Okay, so, um, thank you for that information. Number, I do have one more thing, and I promise I'll be done. Um, speeding on these streets, um, have been very excessive. And I have to even say with Tringali, while we were on the call, the way that they sped down, um, Santa Barbara and then down La Crosse was amazing that a truck can go that fast. First of all, I didn't know that it could. Um, and then, um, there's been complaints about the mail truck, which, you know, I was, I was going to go up to this post office because I don't know if it's from the, I don't know where the actual dispatching of the trucks come from. But the mail trucks are going extremely fast, and I personally have witnessed them blowing stop signs also. So, um, I don't know if there's somebody that, you know, the postmaster, you go up to the, uh, post office to, or I can look in it into it myself and not put anything else on your plate, whichever you prefer.
Well, speaking optimistically, there is somewhat less the response of, but.
Yeah, good, good, yeah, good luck with the the Southfield postmaster.
Well, I just found out I have a postmaster in my family, so that's why I'm like, I could possibly go and, uh, go that route too, the things you learn, um, in a pandemic. So, um, yeah, so I just want to say that. And then also, there is still excessive speeds from residents, I'm assuming, on Santa Barbara, the the thoroughfares.
Yep.
And now. Our minds are clear? Is there anything else?
Well, the food pickup again at Southfield High on Friday. Just one, I don't know if, are we doing it in Lathrop as well on Saturday? Well, the food pickup again at Southfield High on Friday, just one, I don't know if, are we doing it in Lathrop as well on Saturday?
What time do they do it at Southfield?
Uh, nine to one, we will, we will be at Southfield High, passing out food, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, have a good night, and we'll see you all.
All right.
I'll see you, Suzie, Thursday, the rest of you, who knows when, okay.
Have a good night.